Good afternoon. We're going to call this closed session to order for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, current time, four thirty-one. City Clerk, would you mind calling your role?
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
Absent from this meeting is Councilmember Beaver.
Any public comment?
No public comments.
Perfect. Okay, with that, we'll move into our conference room, current time, still four thirty-one. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Call this regular city council meeting, accessory agency and housing authority meeting to order for April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Current time is six o'clock. At this time, we're going to have the invocation by Pastor Tom Villalobos from Oak Valley Church, followed by our captain doing the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pray. Our Heavenly Father, we're so grateful on this the holiest of weeks, celebrating the resurrection of Jesus Christ, that we can come together as a community, serving one another. We thank you for the provision and protection for our citizens, and our prayer is that we would do the will and plan of God in this, our wonderful community. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag, let's be handled remarks. Ready to hear?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Captain. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Beaver.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Woolsey.
Here.
Mayor Pretend Venable.
Here.
Mayor Thorpe.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Okay, so we will move now to closed session reports. We'll start with Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, Mayor. It's my privilege to announce that Jennifer Crawford has been appointed the interim city manager of the city of Ucaipa by a vote of five to zero, with Councilmember Woolsey making the motion and Councilmember Beaver making the second. There are no other reportable actions at a close session that I have.
Okay.
But the city manager may want to give a report on A.
Ma'am?
Thank you. It was by a vote of five-zero that the city council determined to continue with Cole Huber, and they will serve as our city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. Interim city manager, do we have any changes to our agenda?
No changes to the agenda.
Okay. Brings us to our special presentation. Starting off is Yap's Dog of the Month.
If I can get him back. All right. Thank you so much. My name is Jennifer Salise-Hurlbut, and I'm the executive director of Ucaipa Animal Placement Society. And our Dog of the Month here is Kovu, and we called his litter the Lion King Litter, because his mom's name is Nala. Believe it or not, Kovu is a Labrador pug. So you can kind of see his little Labrador face, and his little puggy tail, and his little short legs. So he's, he's got five more brothers and sisters ready to be adopted. We also have Mom, who's been recently spayed. Kovu doesn't have any applications yet, but his sister just got an adoption application today. So he is definitely available. I also wanted to tell you about a couple events we have coming up. On, we have the Home, Homes for Dogs event, April twenty-sixth. So multiple rescues and animal shelters will be at the Ucaipa Equestrian Center with some dogs. If Kovu isn't adopted, he'll be there. So you can come visit with him. Also, we have a pet CPR first aid training. It is ages sixteen and up, open to the public. Seventy-five dollars per person, but half of the proceeds go back to Yap's, so he can get some more food. And then we also have Sunday, May fourth, a tea party that's a senior-to-senior adoption event, where we have a lot of senior animals that, with reduced adoption fees, or even sponsored adoption fees, that would love to go to a home, and it's affordable, and we'll have all those animals there to, to meet people at that time. And then finally, we were recently awarded a Pet Co. Love Grant to do free vaccine clinics for the city of Ucaipa. So we'll be announcing those dates later on this month, and we're hoping to do, add microchips to that as well, at free or low cost. So free vaccine clinics coming soon. And this is little Kovu. All right, do we want to?
Thank you very much. If you'll come down front, we'll take a quick picture with the pup, and then we'll move on to our next special presentation.
Oh, no. Don't give me those puppies out, guys.
Sure.
Yes. Anytime you want, we can always come out with an emotional support puppy, or to boost them around.
This needs to be a city hall dog.
A mascot.
City hall dog. Just roaming around city hall, making people happy.
I mean Labs are good.
He gets to sit right here during city council meetings?
Labs are good working dogs.
Oh.
He can be trained.
I don't know. Looks vicious to me.
Thank you.
Okay, next is a proclamation declaring April as the Child Abuse Prevention Month. We're partnering with the county on this. I'm just going to read a clip of the proclamation, and then after that, we have another one. I'll have Councilman Beaver read that one. Child Abuse Presentation Month, whereas April two thousand and twenty-five has been proclaimed as Child Abuse Prevention Month by the state and federal government. For the purposes of promoting community involvement in preventing child abuse, all children have the right to receive care, protection, and guidance from a family, that a family provides. They have the right to be free from harm and have their physical emotion, physical, emotional, and educational needs met. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city of Ucaipa, let me try that again, that the city council of the city of Ucaipa, California, do hereby recognize April two thousand and twenty-five as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and encourage residents to participate in the event and join the efforts to end child abuse. And again, that is with partnership with the county. You're up, sir. Oh, and that's going to be, I'm sorry, the next one's going to be a proclamation for DMV Donate Life Month. And Catherine Mentes, with one legendary legacy ambassador, to present a quick briefing on the matter as well.
Proclamation of the city of Ucaipa, declaring April two thousand and twenty-five Donate Life Month, whereas organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as expressions of compassion to those in need. And whereas more than one hundred and three thousand individuals nationwide, and more than twenty-three thousand in California are currently on the national organ transplant waiting list, and on average, seventeen people die each day while waiting. And whereas the need for donated organs is especially urgent in Hispanic, Latino, and African-American communities. And whereas a single individual's donation of the heart, lungs, liver, kidneys, pancreas, and small intestines can save up to eight lives. And whereas donation of tissue can save and heal the lives of more than seventy-five others. And whereas organ donors saved more than forty-six thousand lives last year. And whereas any person can register to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor regardless of age or medical conditions. And whereas being a registered donor does not impact the quality of life saving medical care a person receives in an emergency. And whereas California residents can sign up with the Donate Life California donor registry online at any time by visiting www.donatelifeCalifornia.org, or for Spanish speakers, www.donvidaCalifornia.org. And whereas California residents can sign up to be an organ, eye, and tissue donor when applying for a renewing, their driver's license or ID cards at the California Department of Motor Vehicles. And whereas California residents interested in saving a life through living kidney donation may visit www.livingdonationcalifornia.org. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Ucaipa, California, do hereby recognize April two thousand and twenty-five as Donate Life Month. And in doing so, we encourage residents to check yes online when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card. At the DMV, the city seal has been affixed and has been signed by Mayor John Thorpe, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, city of Ucaipa.
You're next.
Thank you. Thank you to the mayor, the city council, the city of Ucaipa. My name is Kat, and I am the mother of three. My eleven-year-old son, Christopher, was autistic. He was in the sixth grade. He loved trains and Batman, and his favorite color was blue. Unlike many autistic children, he didn't shy away from affection. He was the first one to need a hug, or to want to cuddle. I really miss that, hugging my big little boy, and hearing him tell me he loves me. Almost seven and a half years ago, he was accidentally suffocated in his therapy swing in our home. He was rushed to Kaiser, and then immediately sent to Loma Linda Children's Hospital. I don't know what I would have done without the care and support of the healthcare team. Unfortunately, after exhaustive efforts, they were unable to save him. But because of the hard work and the care that they gave him, he was able to save five lives through organ and tissue donation. Both of his heart valves went to children under the age of five. His liver went to a woman in Pasadena. His kidney and pancreas went to a man named Christopher, who just this last December welcomed his first grandchild into this world. So I'm pretty sure that that makes me a great-grandma adjacent. His other kidney went to this amazing little boy named Eddie. Eddie was born with dysplastic kidney disease, and at three months, he was put on a feeding tube, and at ten months, he was put on dialysis. And Eddie spent the first three and a half years of his life, in and out of hospitals, fighting for his life. When his family finally got the call that there was a kidney for Eddie, my Chris's kidney, he was on dialysis ten hours a day. Today, Eddie is an energetic and active eleven-year-old. He plays baseball and soccer. He's joined the Boy Scouts, and he's about to finish the fifth grade. And although Christopher will never again go to school or play outside, I now have the great joy and pleasure of watching this little man live his very best life because of my little man. Chris used to tell us he was a cyborg, made up of different parts and pieces. And whenever he was sick or injured, he'd tell us he could swap out his broken pieces for new ones. Well, as you can imagine, we never had a conversation with our eleven-year-old son about what he would want us to do if he were to suddenly pass. But I take comfort in knowing that if he had had the choice, this is the one that he would have made. There are still a hundred and five thousand people waiting for that life-saving gift. Twenty-two thousand of them live here in California. Anything that we can do to make people aware and informed about the importance of organ, eye, and tissue donation, we must do. Chris is gone, but he lives on in others. And because of organ and tissue donation, he is not only remembered by us, his family and friends, but the family and friends of the lives that he helped save. And for that, I will forever be grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll have you come down real front, real quick, get a picture as we present you with the proclamation.
We'd love that. Any chance I could convince somebody else? Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Chief Mountowski, floor is yours, sir.
Honorable Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight to present your Ucaipa Reserve Firefighters. So if you'll remember, we've had a reserve firefighter program in the city for decades, preceded the city. We've had a paid call program. And over the years, that's changed. That's changed from the thousand people for five jobs to five people for ten jobs. So these folks aren't your career paid call, doing other jobs. These are folks that are going to be going right into a permanent fire employment position. So in two thousand and twenty-one, we had moved with that, we had moved from a volunteer city employees, if you will, to college cadets through Victor Valley College. It was a benefit to the college, it was a benefit to the city. In two thousand and twenty-three, we got that notice that Victor Valley was no longer able to support the program, and we, and at the time, Crafton wasn't either when we first started going through that. And, and when we had that kind of a dysfunction with Victor Valley, Crafton was now able to, to meet that requirement, met with Dean Ward, got everything going, and we finally, in December twenty-four, Fire One Ninety-eight through Crafton Hills College came to fruition. So we have our reserves here. I'd like to introduce them. Joseph Aguilar, Brooklyn Cooper, Andrew Frye, Isaac Hernandez, or Isaiah Hernandez, I'm sorry, I have bad head running, Brandy Johnson, Drake Pay, Garrett Wilson, Charles Erman's not here, he couldn't make it, Devin Duarte, and Ian Matheson. And Devin started today with Cal Fire, so proof in the pudding on the workforce transition. So that's the whole goal now, is take these folks from, it's different than law enforcement, where you get hired and they give you all the training. You have to get the training on your own volition, you have to get the OJT, and you have to get hired, and you have to outcompete everybody else for that job. That's what these folks are doing. So they have firefighter academy, most of them, and they are getting their first year firefighter one, second year firefighter two, as they go through the program. A lot of, a lot of work went into this. So Dean Ward from Crafton Hills College, we absolutely, that's the biggest reason I had to fix it. So it's nice having the staff back, too.
Well, well, thank you. That was, it's awesome to have them here. So we're going to take one more picture. We'll get them all up here in the well with our council, take a quick picture with you and all of them.
I'm going to let them shine, and I'll take a picture of you guys.
Tall ones in the back. Tall guys in the back. You guys can see the village. Yeah. Is that where Joe?
I want to see Councilman Miller.
No, I'm good. We're good.
He gets nervous around too many firemen.
I ought to be younger, yeah. Okay, that brings us to our public comment portion of the evening. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one public comment. I'm sorry, we have two public comments tonight. Jay Freiter, followed by Ms. Kathy Sellers.
Good evening, Council. My name is Jay Freiter. I'm the vice president of the Ucaipa Valley American Little League. Thank you for having me tonight. For the past few years, our participation and registration numbers have gone up, increasing the number of teams in each division, and forcing our hand as a board to get creative with our practice and games schedules for each team in each division, to ensure that the team has an opportunity to play on a diamond. One big advantage is we're able to utilize the lights on fields five and six at Bryant Glen, and the lights at Seventh Street. The lights are especially helpful in the early season before daylight saving times kicks in, and during the fall season by extending the total hours of field usage we have available. However, we've been experiencing multiple lights being burned out, not working on three of these fields. Field five at Bryant Glen has been the worst of the three fields, with one light pole having four out of the six lights on the pole burned out at one time. This has been causing a majority safety concern for our kids. The league has been forced to move around game times, putting a strain on the parents and coaches to get to the fields earlier than normal on their work, and teams cannot warm up and play their games before dark. Per our new usage agreement with the city, the fields' use fees have gone up, and in return, the city would provide more help with maintaining the fields. Our new president, Matt and myself, have worked very hard to foster a good relationship with the city, to ensure that the fields' needs are addressed in the best interest of the players. Unfortunately, going multiple weeks with many lights not working at the fields is not in the best interest of the players. Our board has been working hard to make the American Little League the best that it possibly can be. We've been fundraising and saving our own money for a number of years to improve the field conditions and provide the community with the best experience possible at the ballpark. Despite our increasing usage costs this year alone, the board has ordered and graded all the fields with, so we've ordered clay and graded all the fields that cost us alone twenty-two thousand dollars. We had to do new wiring to the scoreboards to get them working with all the lights, and replacing the light bulbs that cost us fifteen hundred dollars. And we've completed the fencing on three of the fields at Bryant Glen that cost us twenty-nine thousand dollars out of our pocket just this year. Plus many more things that happened. We've had to order pitching mounds, because the fields have been used by travel ball with metal cleats, and they're ruining the mounds. So we graded them out, took them all out, and now we put portable mounds on there, which cost us forty-five hundred dollars for each mound, and we ordered two of them. We did not do this in these things to feel a sense of entitlement to the fields. We did them as a duty of the board to provide every kid within our boundaries the best experience possible through America's pastime. Not only do these improvements help our program, but they also benefit the entire city if there's a Bryant Glen field at Seventh Street or community parks for everyone to use and enjoy. WIVL would like to ask the council their consideration to help with their current lighting situation, put in countless volunteer hours and sponsorship dollars to get the fields in condition the way they are today. So what we're asking for is to help with the lights. It's a big concern of ours, and trying to help with that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, Kathy Sellers. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment to thank this council for being diligent and making the hard that are uncomfortable, but we need to create a foundation for meaningful dialogue that ensures that diverse voices are not only heard, but valued. In family law and appellate court settings, professional mediators are often brought in to facilitate communication, ensure neutrality, and guide parties toward mutually acceptable solutions. These same principles can be adapted to community disputes. When disagreements are channeled into dialogue rather than confrontation, new and unexpected pathways to progress can emerge. We can move away from name-calling and secretly-recorded meetings, which is illegal under Penal Code Section six thirty-two. I believe we will discover that we have more in common than that which divides us. It's time to restore the reputation of Ucaipa as the city that every other city admires. I have had countless leaders from other communities tell me that they wish their citizens were as engaged as the people of Ucaipa. We have a lot of work to accomplish, and can be better and stronger together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have two more cards, but those are for items eleven and fourteen. We'll hear those comments when we get to those items.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, this is the time in our agenda for councilmembers to disclose if they have any conflicts of interest related to tonight's agenda and topics. Seeing none, hearing none? All right, moving on. Brings us to our consent agenda, items one through ten. Does anybody wish to pull any items? Move of approval. I have a first from Councilman Beaver. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh. Which one?
Either Chris or Bob.
All right, Bob's the second. They're fighting over it. Okay, so with that, a first and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moves us on to item number eleven. Mr. Preciado?
Hi, good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is an update on the County Line Road Corridor Improvement Project, and tonight's update will be, will include an emphasis on the ongoing utility construction and the upcoming repaving schedule for County Line Road. We understand, city staff, we understand the inconveniences that we are hearing from the public with the street, the street closure, the delays, and also the rough driving, rough driving surface that people have been dealing with for several years now. This project is more than just a transportation project. It's more than just a roundabout sidewalk and bike lane project. It also includes some pretty extensive utility work that was, that required some coordination between the city of Ucaipa, the city of Cal Mesa, and also eight different utility agencies. So, you know, and, and we'll have more information on that to come here, but I, I wanted to emphasize that, again, that that project is not only a street improvement project, but also there's a lot of utility work that has happened to support the, the street improvement project itself, but also some utility infrastructure that was generated by the various utility companies. So our assistant city engineer, Landon Kern, will provide additional information on that, and also an update on the construction.
Thank you, Fermin, for that introduction and good evening, Mayor and members of council. This report tonight is focused on an update for this, this project along the corridor and some of the other projects that have been taking place in that same area. This first slide here shows the general area of County Line Road that we'll be focusing on tonight between ITAM Freeway and Bryant Street. And this, this project has been a joint project with the city of Cal Mesa. The roundabouts and the street improvements have been completed for some time, and so tonight's update is a little bit more focused on the ongoing and the future utility work and what to expect upon the completion of that utility work that's ongoing. The project has had multiple grant funding sources for the various segments being constructed in phases, and so this slide shows those different phases and those grant funding sources that made up the primary funding for the construction of those improvements. On the screen before you, you can see the orange and green segments have been completed with MSRC funding in 2023, and then the green segments in the ATP-funded area, and those were completed in the 2019 timeframe primarily with that grant funding. The future Cal Mesa intersection with County Line Road, those intersection improvements, as well as the interchange improvements along the ITAM Freeway there on either side, those ramps as they connect to County Line Road, those are future projects that are not under construction yet, and Cal Mesa is also going to be taking the lead on those segments. A significant portion of this corridor, as you can see on the screen in purple, those segments between Fifth and Bryant are being constructed primarily with the LPP grant funds through the SB1 programming with the state via a partnership with the city of Cal Mesa and Ucaipa. City of Cal Mesa taking the lead on that construction contract. All of those intersections and segments with those street improvements have been completed and have been open to traffic for some time. There are several items that are being addressed primarily related to electrical work for the street and the decorative lighting prior to that contract being closed out, but the majority of that work is completed. Just a note, at Bryant Street, there is an existing speed bump that was installed several years ago. That was in place as a temporary measure primarily to deal with some of the drainage that's not getting into the newly-installed catch basins and storm drains because that final layer of pavement hasn't been installed, and that will be removed once that final layer of pavement is in place and that stormwater runoff can get into the storm drain underground and not, not get down through that roundabout and into the areas of Cal Mesa that have had some impacts to the street and properties over there. This, this final slide here is kind of a visual illustration of a lot of the different utility projects that have been taking place. As Fermin mentioned, there are eight different utility companies that have completed either relocation work to accommodate some of the street and intersection improvements, or even the underground improvements that have taken place primarily for drainage, and those are completed or are in the process of being completed in accordance with each company's capital improvement program or maintenance programming. A list of those utility agencies is provided in the report, and as Fermin mentioned, it has been a challenge to coordinate with all of these different parties, all of these eight different utility agencies and their corresponding construction schedules in an effort to try to align as best we can to minimize delays with traffic control and overlapping construction improvements, pavement conditions, and whatnot. So that's been a challenge we continue to work through and do what we can to minimize those impacts with those multiple projects taking place in the same location at the same time. The most extensive utility project that's taking place along this corridor, which is shown before you in blue, is the South Mesa Water Company's replacement of water lines to accommodate new water mains that are being installed for their residents and projects. The limits actually extend a little bit beyond the limits of the County Line Road project, all the way a little bit beyond the screen here to the east of Bryant Street up to Douglas Place, all the way down to the ITAM Freeway, and there is also additional water line work that's taking place that extends beyond through the interchange area all the way to County Line Lane as a part of another contract that South Mesa Water Company is completing. The South Mesa Water Company contract, that, that blue water line work is substantially complete, pending some final inspections and testing. They're kind of wrapping up that, that contract work with Borden here. Ucaipa and Cal Mesa are working with South Mesa Water Company to determine the required final pavement repairs associated with their trench construction. This may lead to an agreement for South Mesa Water Company either to contribute financially for the repaving within the limits of their project if they choose to take that approach, or to simply update some of their repairs in accordance with the city's standards, and either of those methods would of course be in accordance with the city of Ucaipa's trench repair standards for that pavement repair, as we typically require with permits that we issue for, for utility work of that nature. Couple of the other things to note on here, we also have, the green line shows some of the sewer infrastructure that's being constructed by Ucaipa Valley Water District. That work is also substantially complete. I know just here, over the last week or so, they completed that work that's primarily under the freeway between Cal Mesa Boulevard. It actually extends beyond the screen all the way to their treatment facility to the west, and their, their paving repairs have been completed. I think they're wrapping up that work here. The, the red lines here show some of the other utility projects, just kind of highlighting some of the more significant relocation work that took place. Some of that work up here at Bryant Street includes the tie-ins with the Department of Water Resources' transmission main to the existing South Mesa Water Company facilities. This red line up here around, the circle around Fifth Street, there was a pretty significant amount of utility, dry utility relocations, and then there's some gas company work taking place now. About a year ago, when we provided a similar update upon the opening of Fifth Street, that was about when that work was finishing up, and then the line between Fifth Street and ITAM Freeway is showing a future utility project that the city of Cal Mesa and Riverside County Flood Control District will be taking the lead on, installing a new storm drain facility between Fifth Street and ITAM Freeway. And then finally on here, the yellow line represents, that acronym stands for Sangre Gonia Pass Water Agency. The old South Mesa Water Company water main that is being replaced with the new mains is being planned here by what I'll refer to as the PASS Agency, just for simplicity, to be rehabilitated and reused. The PASS Agency is the lead agency for this project, and that will require some additional underground work on County Line Road to access that old South Mesa Water Company line. They will be rehabilitating that project so that it can be able to convey water from Bryant Street at that DWR connection, westerly all the way down County Line Road, primarily in the southerly part of County Line Road, and then it terminates down just past Third Street to a property where there will be a groundwater recharge basin that will be installed to facilitate groundwater recharge, and that will be the, the end of where that water will terminate and engage with the groundwater recharge. And so that, that project will be, is being planned for the spring and summer. In the PASS Agency, we've been working closely with them on their construction and bidding schedule, and they've committed to completing this work by September of 2025. Really, that is one of the last utility projects that we're excited to see wrap up here, and as that happens, the city will be taking the lead to repave County Line Road between Fifth Street and Bryant, and we're anticipating that will be able to occur as early as September or October of this year. For the segments between Fifth Street and the freeway, that, that repaving will need to take place after this, this final utility intersection work is completed. I mentioned that earlier, the storm drain project that Cal Mesa is taking the lead on between Fifth Street and Cal Mesa Boulevard and the freeway, because that's going to be taking place in the future, that rehabilitation of that segment of County Line Road, although that pavement is in need of repair, that repaving will be delayed until that project is complete. Much of this work has taken place with the eight utility companies, these grant funding sources, and reviewing approving agencies that require the permits to facilitate that work. These are some of the reasons for the long duration of the construction that's impacted this corridor for years. Coordination has been challenging, and staff remains committed to working with all parties to facilitate the completion of all of these projects. And once again, just to highlight, you know, with the plan completion of these utility contracts that are wrapping up, hopefully later this year, County Line Road will be repaved between Fifth Street and Bryant Street. And that concludes my update at this time. Fermin and I are here to answer any questions that you may have, and I know we have a public comment as well, so.
I've got questions for you, but let's have the public comment first and then we'll come back, because I think there's going to be a little bit of questions in dialogue.
Mr. George Sardison.
George Sardison, 12451 Custer Street. Mayor and council members, I looked over the staff report on this, and of course, you all are aware, this is a four and a half year project to date, and I use Bryant-Singleton to go east out of town or down across Fifth usually to go to Cal Mesa, probably like a good number of residents do. And I think that, thinking ahead to the Cal Mesa Boulevard and County Line Road construction there of a roundabout, really needs to have a hard look at who's going to manage that. I think Cal Mesa's been managing it. Our city is a cosigner to all that, but I think there should be some lessons learned from this nearly five-year project that, and I know I'm not going to compare County Line Road to Avenue E, but Ucaipa set the standards for residential roundabouts by Second and Third Street. It took a little while to get the landscaping, the rock scape done. They have a larger area to landscape on their roundabouts, but I really would urge the city and the staff here to consider going forward. And I know all these utilities have been an issue. It's too bad they couldn't have just tore up County Line and got everything in and then started doing roundabouts. But I would urge the council to consider having discussions or directing staff or coming up with some alternative ways to manage these projects going forward. I think it would be a benefit to our city and to the construction project itself, because we know closer down by the, by the freeway, it's going to be a monstrosity of a job to get people, you know, probably detoured down to Live Oak off-ramp and on-ramp there when that takes place, because that's going to be a big job. So I just really think that we should take a, you know, a big look at this going forward if we have an opportunity with the future project of completing this. Thank you kindly for your time.
Thank you, sir.
No more cards.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll start off and then I'll turn over my colleagues. Landon, you said something about that last section there from Fifth to the freeway in red is still ongoing. I don't think you said, and I don't remember seeing it in the staff report, when do we think that area, that portion will be complete?
So the grant funding has been obtained. Cal Mesa is taking the lead on that storm drain project. I believe they're working through some final comments in the review with Riverside County Flood Control District. So in our recent meetings with them, they've indicated they're hoping that process will wrap up soon where they can go out to bid and in the months that follow to go out to construction. So I don't know if Cal Mesa's provided a schedule at this time, but I think our last meeting, they were hoping that that process would wrap up this summer. They could go out to bid and we would be seeing construction shortly to follow.
All right, so we don't have a, we don't have a rough timetable or anything?
Not yet.
Okay. So this, this particular project in this side of town is shared by a couple of council members, and I know this has been frustrating to me for years, because that portion that we're talking about right now, I mean, it's all bad. I'm not, I'm preaching to the choir, I'm sure, but that section from the freeway to Fifth is the worst, and it doesn't matter who I'm talking to on the phone. When I'm driving down that section of the roadway, they know exactly where I am within our county probably, because you can hear the car rattling in the background. It rattles so poorly. And I've got family members and friends that routinely, you know, let me know that we need to get this taken care of. It's had an impact on, I think, our businesses there on County Line, even the little businesses up near Third, to the point, I think, one of our businesses is really struggling whether or not they may be able to keep their doors open, mainly because of all the closures that we've had over there. And then when they open back up, the traffic doesn't seem to come back because people are just kind of fed up with traveling down that roadway. When I was doing some research to find out where this project was, I had a conversation with one of the council members from Cal Mesa, made an indication that they may be waiting for some funds from our end on some things related to this project. Does that sound familiar at all?
I'm not familiar with requests for funding that they're, they're waiting on from us. I haven't heard about such, such requests.
No, that, and if I may, there are two different projects that we are coordinating, coordinated with Cal Mesa on. One is that storm drain project. The other one is the intersection at County Line Road and Cal Mesa Boulevard. Our, the city's adopted capital improvement program budget includes the city's share of the funding for the Cal Mesa Boulevard and County Line Road project. As far as the storm drain, the city of Ucaipa does not have, we're not participating financially with that component. Our, our, our component of the project is to coordinate with a property owner who owns property within the city of Ucaipa for a drainage easement, but there has been no discussion about the city's financial participation for the storm drain project itself.
I don't, I don't know if it was related to the storm drain precisely, just the project in general, that there was something that we, they may be waiting for some response back from our city. And so that's what I wanted, just to see if they were waiting on anything from us, because I don't want us to be the, the bump in the road, so to speak, in the project like Edison or some of the other things have been in, in long lead times and taking care of things, if it's anything that we have control over. I mean, some things we may not, but this has been a, as you guys know, it's been a headache for folks on our side of town. And at one point in time, I think, Steph, you've had regular meetings or briefings with Cal Mesa, correct?
Yes.
On progress?
Yeah, and on that note, we have been meeting regularly through the course of the project with Cal Mesa's staff. Through that partnership, there's a funding agreement, and so while Cal Mesa's taking the lead on the construction contract administration and managing the construction and inspections, we're very involved with that process as well, and as those payments go to the contractor, we work closely with them to facilitate our fair share of that, those payments. So there hasn't been any delay on that end. And as Fermin mentioned, as we've met with them regularly to anticipate the upcoming phases of construction, we've made sure to incorporate that into our budgeting process for our capital improvement program. So for the upcoming phase of the Cal Mesa interchange is one example, like Fermin mentioned, we have that funding that's been identified in our CIP to, to meet that schedule.
And if I may add, at our next meeting, we will coordinate with them on two things. One is the schedule for the storm drain, because if the schedule is a little further out, we will look at temporary measures to address the pavement between Fifth and Cal Mesa Boulevard, and then number twos, we'll confirm with them that they are not waiting on anything from us for any of the other projects. But as far as we know, we have the agreements in place for the projects that are active, but if there's anything we need to address, we'll follow up with them.
All right, thank you. And with that, I'll turn over my colleagues. Mayor Portman, do you have anything?
Who determines on the, the lead on, on these projects?
For this project, because Cal Mesa was, we coordinated with them and they chose to approach the grant agencies to apply for that grant funding, they were the agency that was awarded that grant, and so I think through that effort and the partnership and the agreement that, that we identified, they were selected as the lead agency for the LPP portion of the project.
Yeah, for the LPP portion, the project that's already been completed, as Landon mentioned, since Cal Mesa took the lead with the grant application, they were required to manage the construction contract as part of that grant. The, the storm drain project that we referred to, they're the lead agency with that, with Riverside County Flood Control, because it addresses the drainage from the city of Cal Mesa, so they would be managing the construction contract for that. And for the County Line Road and Cal Mesa Boulevard intersection project, they were successful in obtaining some Transportation Enhancement Act funding many years ago to acquire the right-of-way for that project from the city of Cal Mesa side and the construction. So I believe that grant program also required so I believe that grant program also requires them to manage the construction of that contract as well.
And just a note on that same project, Firmin was referencing that Calamasa Boulevard, County Line Road interchange project, I know in our meetings with Calamasa, they indicated that's a, that's a pretty large project, that what the grant funding, they were able to achieve, that's an eight-to-nine million dollar construction project, and our Ucaipa share for that is 1.8 million, I believe, and our CIP, so that's a significant reduction. So those grant funding applications and their success is really resulting in driving our share of those projects that are along that border down quite a bit, so.
Yeah, but it just impacts our cities just that much more than them, so, thank you.
So I was, I was at least one of the councilmen that asked the mayor to have this agendized. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, it's bad, the entire corridor, it was just something that was discussed when I was campaigning in 2020, of something that needs to be addressed. And when we broke ground on construction, I was pleased to tell, you know, our citizens, hey, it's, look, it's getting fixed, but it's not. Who has, I understand there's public utilities under the roadway, and adjacent to the electrical lines, relative to the roadway itself, who has authority over the road and grants permit? Because if I understand correctly, the cities own the road by way of the taxpayers funding the roads, is we grant dig permits and stuff like that to these utility companies?
Yeah, so generally speaking, the Fifth Street intersection is the one portion of the corridor between Fifth Street and Bryant that extends exclusively into Ucaipa. So the Fifth Street intersection in that area specifically is mainly, primarily the Ucaipa's jurisdiction. As you extend easterly, most of the road is about split in half, so the intersections and the roadway is about split in half with the right-of-way, so the permitting, the trench repair requirements, the inspections are kind of split 50/50. As you get closer to the freeway, you know, between Calamasa Boulevard and the interchange, that is in Calamasa's jurisdiction, so generally speaking, it's a shared responsibility, about 50/50, with the exception of, you know, Fifth Street and the interchange area.
We, okay, when you say inspections, you mean city, the city inspectors going out and making sure stuff is done right, is that what you're talking about?
Correct, yeah. Calamasa, as they're taking the lead for a lot of the construction, they have a consultant team, TKE makes up a lot of that inspection staff. We work closely with them, because a lot of that work's taking place in Ucaipa, to ensure that our standards are being met for the northerly half of a large section of the roadway and Fifth Street and...
And then forgive my ignorance, I just want to confirm, is South Mesa Water Company, do they have a board, or are they a private company that doesn't have a public utility board?
They are a private water company.
Yes, and if I may add, they are a private mutual water company, and they, there is an exception when it comes to South Mesa Water Company and their utility work in blue on the screen, there is a settlement agreement that was settled in 2002, which identified South Mesa Water Company has had prior rights along the city of Ucaipa public roads, so there is a different process that we go through as we work with, as we partner with utility work with them.
Yeah, and to that effect, for an example, the permit that we issued for South Mesa Water Company, because of that stipulation, that court agreement, we actually issue a special work permit, there are some special conditions that apply in accordance with that document from many years ago, in addition to our encroachment permit, a lot of the other agencies and companies we work with, it's a more standard encroachment permit, so there are some unique features of that South Mesa Water Company permit. They reference a city standard in a couple of different cases, that's a little bit older, but it's just a little bit different than some of the other agencies we work with.
Well, for several years now, we, the council, whoever's sitting up here has been getting beat up on the perception is that the city of Ucaipa, because that's who they talk to, maybe, maybe our counterparts and our sister city over there are getting beat up as well, but the perception is that the city is failing. The cities are failing to uphold the roads, and improve them and make them operational. Maybe it's because people don't really consider the utility aspect of a roadway, and that there's pipes, lines that are running parallel to the roads underneath of them. I know that we did a pretty good job highlighting the Edison pole in the middle of the road, but that isn't a whole lot of advertising, there's a pole in the middle of the road, that's why it's not open, but we, we've got to find a way, try to find a way to expedite this. I live on the north side of town, so I don't have, I don't travel County Line all that often, I had the unfortunate opportunity to do that a few weeks ago, and I'm confident that it would have probably been more comfortable in a horse and buggy. It was bad, it probably would be better just as dirt, in fact, at this point, it's, I mean, and then, and I drive a pickup truck, so I'm okay with it, but people who drive nicer vehicles, maybe are getting their cars tore up, or something like motorcycle, I mean, I think you'd be taking your life into your own hands, even more than you already do, driving a motorcycle down that road. To the extent we're able to, we got to try to be the one that may be putting more pressure, find creative ways to pressure this, this is, this has been out of hand five years. When you said a temporary, a temporary speed bump, it's not temporary if it's five years later, that's just the road now. Temporary would indicate that it's, it's going to go away, but anyway, can't give a timeline, so we, to the extent you're able to, from our city staff, find ways to leverage pressure, because this is getting absolutely ridiculous, that I was campaigning on this when we were starting, and now here, I've been, I've been re-elected, and it's still a problem. I mean, there's zero, there's not an excuse for that, we've got to do better, and especially because there are, there are public utility with boards that are involved, if you're listening at home, go talk to your elected board members of those, put pressure on them people as well, because, I mean, at the end of the day, there's only so much we can do, but I'd love to see the city of Ucaipa try to find, and Calamasa at that point, find ways to leverage these utility contractors to just get to work and get the job done, so we can move on with our city.
Is there any LDs that we can push on them, on the utility companies?
Liquidated damages for the contract? With Calamasa's contract, I don't believe they're in a situation where they've gone beyond their working days, there have been some, Calamasa could speak to it more directly, but because of some of the utility work, some of that contract work was paused until the utility work took place, and as they restart that contract, I don't believe they're in a situation where they're beyond their, their working days for the LPP contract specifically. With respect to the South Mesa Water Company project, I believe that board in that contractor completed it within the contract working days as well, so as far as I know, they're not, the contracts that have occurred haven't gotten into that situation yet. We certainly understand the inconveniences, and we're hearing a lot of that same sentiment. I happen to live on County Line Road with four other residents, and I hear about it, we're, we're doing all we can to expedite and work with the utility agencies to try to, to get, get that road repaved as soon as possible. As much as we'd like to repave it sooner, the last thing we want to do is invest our city funding and repave that road for another utility company to come in and cut that, so we're trying to also balance that, our investment, to make sure that it goes as far as it can, and that road is in a really good state for many, many years. So we're hoping that this, this difficult series of projects is coming to an end, and we'll be able to repave that road and not see many, if at all, any more impacts for many, many years, so.
Maybe just in the future, it's not a project of this, of this scale, just bite off smaller bites of the apple, because otherwise, I mean, maybe it's just a lesson to both cities, this was just more than they can handle at this point, and it caused a five-year project, whereas people can deal with, all right, we're going to do this portion, in a couple of years, we'll do this portion, and maybe that would have been a better idea. I don't know, I don't have the answer, all I know is, that's not the end. Whatever that is over there right now, that is the opposite of the answer, that's still a problem.
Councilman Miller?
No comment.
All right, thank you, Landon, thank you, Firmin. That brings us to item number 12.
That will be me again, I'll just jump right in here to the next slides. Thank you again, and this report is for our Upper Wildwood Creek Basin Four project, which is identified in the city's master plan of drainage update adopted by the city council in 2012. This first slide here shows a section of Wildwood Creek, generally between homes and the only Wildwood Creek crossing of Wildwood Canyon Road, which is just east of Oak Grove. Within this stretch of Wildwood Creek, we have a few key facilities along Wildwood Creek that I'd like to point out, first being our project area, which is to the right of the screen here in yellow, we've got an arrow pointing to the location of the proposed project basin there, which is just east of the second facility I wanted to highlight, which is the city's Wildwood Park, shown in green there, right near the intersection of Mesa Grande Drive and Wildwood Canyon Road. Finally, to the left part of the screen, and also I should mention, in blue in the dash line you're seeing, that is generally the Wildwood Creek alignment there, that kind of splits into two sections on the east part of the screen. And on the left part of the screen, the final facility I wanted to highlight there is the Wildwood Creek Basins, or the Wildwood Basins that were constructed, completed in 2011 by the city in a partnership with the county, the county of San Bernardino Flood Control District, upon completion of that project, took that over for maintenance, so they've been maintaining that facility since that project was constructed in 2011. That project encompasses about 26 acres of basins, trails, and channel improvements, and that project was a significant construction effort, actually in the neighborhood of about $4 million, resulted in, you know, significant flood control protection and associated removal of many properties downstream from the FEMA-designated flood zones along Wildwood Creek. So just kind of a general project area where we're talking about here. And on the next slide, we kind of zoom in a little bit closer to where you can see the Wildwood Park on the left, and our project area is shown in blue, as well as the area in the green boundary, which is the, our area where we have the Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail System that's been constructed over the last several years. And one of the project benefits of this proposed basin project is connectivity, you know, from Wildwood Canyon Road into that Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail area, there would be two crossings of the creek at those different grade control structures that could potentially be designed to tie in with that Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail area. Some of the other project benefits we've shown here on the screen include flood control and protection, groundwater recharge is something that we see with this proposed project, the way it's designed, as well as erosion and sediment control and habitat preservation, primarily oak trees. Each year we see with, with storm events, we see some of the vertical channel walls in some areas are eroding, and some of those oak trees will be lost into the channel, and so that habitat along the creek and those slopes, one of the goals of this project would be to protect some of that habitat, and as I mentioned, access to the Wildwood Mountain Bike Trail project there. One note on the flood protection, flood control component of this project, while no properties would be removed from the flood zones downstream of this particular basin project, the project does reduce peak flows, and it does offer some flood control benefits along with some of these other benefits that are mentioned. A little bit different than that larger Wildwood Creek Basins project that was constructed in 2011. This, this project just shows that the funding mix for the project, we've got approximately just shy of $3.2 million in development impact fee funding, we have some of those ARPA funding from the county of San Bernardino, dedicated toward this project, we have some state funding through the Watersmart Grant Program, as well as federal funds through the Congressional Community Project Spending Program. Of that authorized funding, because we have been working on this project for some time, not all of that funding is available, we have an estimated $2.765 million that is available with those funding sources to move forward with the project, to complete all of the work and all the requirements that go along with the construction. So this next table here before you shows our updated project cost estimate and available funding. That first row at the top is our construction cost estimate, so that is made up of the low bid that we received after going through that public bid process late last year, that low bid was approximately $3.5 million. And in addition to that, we, of course, build in the contingency and some of the environmental permitting that's required, the biological and tribal monitoring that would go with the permits that we obtained to move forward with construction, and that's shown on the second row there, and about $250,000. Finally, that environmental impact mitigation cost, because this work would be taking place in the creek, and those impacts to the environment would, some of which would be permanent, some of which would be temporary, those permits require that environmental impact mitigation. Some of it were, we were able to identify to take place on site, but a significant portion was also identified to take place off-site, and we set aside those areas to enhance, in some cases, construct and preserve similar habitat areas, and so that's a pretty significant cost that makes up a part of this construction cost estimate. And so that, that gets us down to the total estimated cost to complete the project, getting up there close to $7 million, and so with the total available funding to complete the project closer to 2.7, 2.8, that leaves us with that shortfall at the bottom there, so the additional funding needed to complete the project, when you factor in the contract to complete the work, and all of the required environmental permitting and mitigation costs, we have a pretty significant funding shortfall to complete the project. Based on the additional funding to complete the project that would be needed, my recommendation at this time is to reject all bids for the Upper Wildwood Creek Basin Four project, because there are so many different components to this project, and it's very complex, one of our recommendations would be to return to council, probably at the very next meeting, with some of the grant deadlines approaching, with more information, options for funding, talk a little bit more about the project benefits and the project's viability, potentially even some ideas of reworking the project to drive those costs down, and still achieve some of the same benefits that we've seen. And also, of course, to do that in the context of considering those adopted city council goals for 2025. So with that, that concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Your engineers' estimate is 2.6, where'd you come up with that number? We're about $800,000 under what came in?
Yes, yeah, so one of the main reasons why we've taken a close look at that, our estimate was quite low. If you look at a lot of the unit costs from a few of the previous projects in years past, if you take Wilson III, for example, the quantity of export material that was identified in this project, around 80,000 cubic yards to export, unlike some of our other projects where we've been able to see that cost a little bit lower, with really nearby or even immediately adjacent stockpile areas, those costs were a lot lower. We're seeing that cost to export that material in the order of 17 or closer to $20 per cubic yard for this project, so that's probably the main reason why we're seeing those costs so high with this bid. I think that can be a little bit dependent on the market and different project areas that are available at that time, but that's one of the main reasons why we're seeing these bids higher.
Did we have a place to take that dirt?
I'm sorry?
Did we have a place to take that dirt?
We did not identify a location in the specifications to take that material, there was a small portion of the material with the excavation, with the environmental permitting that required us to harvest the top soil, we've identified a location at a portion of the park, a question parking lot next to the park to identify and maximize that local area for some of the material, but a majority, majority of that 75,000 cubic yards we anticipate for export, we did not identify a location for that material. We left that up to the contractors to try to drive that competition and get that price as low as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Kern, so basically that rule of dirt's market-driven, and when you initially looked at it, it's one price, and then as the market goes, it changes. So I think that's probably an issue for us on this, I would, I would probably assume, right? We don't know where that'll be in the future, I can't believe it goes up that much, but that really is the crux of it, right?
Yeah, we saw that in some of my research on some previous project, Wilson III, for example, even the Wildwood Creek Basins, that cost was between two and, one and $5 per cubic yard to export it, we're getting close to 20 right now, and like you said, we, at Wilson III, for example, we came to council a while back with that surplus material, we've seen contractors come, and it's really dependent on the availability and the need for dirt in the region, and so that cost, depending on the timing, can really, can really change quite a bit.
Thank you, Landon.
Councilman Woolsey?
Do we need a motion?
We do need a motion, do you have any questions? But we have to see if there's public comment first.
Oh, okay.
Any public?
No comments, sir.
All right, so now we can take a motion.
Okay, I know that we reject the bids.
So as staff has recommended, items one and two?
Yes.
So I've got a first by Councilman Woolsey to accept this recommendations, one and two, do I have a... two. Do I have a second?
Second.
First and second, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, Chief Malowski.
So here to give you a receive and file report on the fire hazard severity zone update. So this is an item that we're going to have to bring back to you for adoption, but we want to get that public information rolling out right now. It's a statewide effort that's happening right now with all fire departments and for the benefit of the public as this goes live. So in 2000, 1990, after the Oakland Fire, the Bates Bill was passed and it requires the state, requires Border Forest, D.C. Fire to identify high hazard severity fire zones statewide, so whether it's state land or within municipalities. In 2008, the state had the most recent update until now that identified those areas and they identified those areas in the SRA state lands and LRA. So within the local responsibility area, it was just an identification, hey, this is a high fire hazard severity zone. It didn't require, it didn't have any like regulation or administrative stuff with it. Come, oh, what year was that, 20, sorry, should have wrote it down, 2021, Assembly Bill 38 was passed. So Assembly Bill 38, if you're familiar with that, is the disclosure for real estate, when you, when you sell a home in a high fire hazard severity zone in state land or in local responsibility area, you have to give a disclosure. So you go to sell your home, hey, just so you know, this is a high fire hazard severity zone, and that has a phase two. So the initial that we were doing was a clearance inspection, and phase two rolling out this year will be your tenants for the safer from wildfire regulations. So if you don't have any of the home hardening, you'll also have to disclose that. So that way somebody coming, coming in knows what they're getting into when they buy that property. And that was the only really regulation we were subject to. Now they've passed the governors, the couple, couple laws, Assembly Bill 3074, we started work, we, Cal Fire, Borders Forest, you, those guys, Sacramento, not, we started working on updating our fire hazard severity zones with better modeling with ember fork, ember casts. So the bulk, 90-plus percent of homes that burned down in major wildfires are all from embers. It's not fire going, you know, fire, flame, it's embers. Winds blowing 75 miles an hour in the Palisades, those embers are going one to two miles away. So you can, you know, you can't really get ahead of that too well. So that started, and then there was a second Senate Bill 504 last year that applied that to the local responsibility area, which is incorporated cities. So with that update and the governor's executive order that N-1825, we are now subject to re-identifying our, the state did, re-identifying our very high, high, and now they've added a new moderate fire hazard severity zone. And with that, there is regulation change. So now we need to adopt those zones, which will come back to you for adoption. We need to add 7A of the California Building Code, which is your WUI, Wildland Urban Interface Building Standards. Luckily, we are already ahead of that, and we have adopted those for our high and very high fire hazard severity zones. So administratively, the folks that's really going to affect is somebody who starts a project like right now, right now, before that adoption, and then they get moved into that zone. So it's just going to be a small portion of people it's going to affect. So we're kind of ahead of that, but we will need to come back and adopt these within 120 days. The maps were released March 24th. And I'll kind of give you the old reference here. This is our city boundary, so all the areas in red, and they only identified it as high fire hazard severity zone for the locals, I'm sorry, very high. That's the old map, and it's kind of a poor map, but that's straight what the state gave us on their, on their map downloads. And this is our new map, and you can see that yellow, orange, and red, that being moderate, high, and very high. And I have a better side-by-side kind of comparison here for you. So they, they took in, and some cities, I don't want to say they fared better or worse because it is what it is, is we live in a fire hazard area. We've had major wildfires here the last several years, you know, entire incorporation of the city. So you can see some of these gaps they've completely filled in here. And then some people, some folks, a small percentage of folks here, some of the folks over by Mill Creek in Mentone were, were dropped off where it doesn't exist here anymore. So, and this is what all the, it's computer methodology, it's not run by, it's computer programming of fire science, it's not somebody just drawing lines on a map. And a lot of this where they've just, they've just connected all these dots here. That's kind of the best map there. So statistics, we were, we had 6,679 acres of very high fire hazard severity zone prior to this. This will increase it to, with all zones, 11,898 for a 78% increase. So we also, just for very high, that puts us about a 50% increase in homes that will be within those zones. Also for reference, we're the fourth, the fourth highest in fire hazard severity zone in the county behind Chino Hills, has a lot, Hesperia and San Bernardino City. And then our rural living here, we're, we're coming in at fourth as far as total acreage. This is really just start getting that information flow so people are aware, it's not a surprise. This will have to come back for a public hearing, first and second reading, and then we'll have to adopt these new maps for our city. So it's kind of, it's, it's good for awareness, it's good that there's, this will also, I'm sorry, we'll also add the Zone Zero, which is coming out. So Zone, they have these regulations in these areas. Zone Zero, basically, we will, at some point, the regulation's in the works right now on hearings. If it's passed as proposed, you, you have to be ember-resistant zero to five feet from your house in these areas. And there's no, it's another state unfunded thing, we don't have, they're not giving us money to go enforce this. When we go do those, those real estate inspections, that's when we'll identify like, hey, you're not in compliance with, you're not passing your compliance. So that's when the actual inspection will take place, when you sell your home. So it's a law that would be enforceable, we could go enforce if we want, hey, you need to go take your wooden gate down because it's within five feet of your house and replace with a metal gate. And so it's going to be, financially, it's going to be a burden to people. Now on the insurance side, which we don't do, I can only assume this would have a major impact statewide. So there's a lot of cities where their numbers went up 400% on, on this. Temecula, I think, was, was around that range, three, 350% increase. We're at a 78% increase. So, and it is, you know, you look at Palisades and Eaton Fire, any of those, and that's the reality of where we live. So more to come, more to come back to you and in, as we get all the actual information out, but we wanted to just kind of kickstart this and make people aware, and then we'll bring the formal stuff back to you for, for hearing and adoption.
Thank you, chief. Any questions? Do we have any comments, public comment?
No comments.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
All right, that brings us to item 14, Mr. Phil White.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. Item 14 deals with the strategic plan that we've been talking about. This is, coming back to you one more time, last, last meeting, it was discussed as to can we do this in-house? And I quickly responded with, you don't really want us to do that, no. As I thought more and more about that, there is an opportunity, we have the skill set. So I wanted to bring this item back and provide clarity to that response. And as we went back in-house, we kind of put together some different options for you guys to consider as we move forward with this very important plan that will impact the future of the community. As, as we've heard tonight, there's a lot of different opinions on what UCAIPA should be, what we should be focusing on. As I, as I talked to members of the community and say, hey, what, how do you see the future of UCAIPA, what do you want? I hear things like, sometimes I hear like more family-friendly entertainment. I often hear better streets, we've heard about that tonight, better parks. We've also heard more fields, better maintained fields, better lighting at the fields. I also almost always hear that the city should stay in its own lane, let private enterprise handle the important things. A lot of different opinions as, as we go through this process. What the strategic planning process does is reconciles the community's different perspectives, overlays out with available funding, and says, okay, this is how the community wants to move forward. So it's a very important process, and it kind of reconciles all of those individual ideas. UCAIPA is in a unique situation where we really can be whatever we want to be. I tell my kids sometimes, but I don't really mean it. You can grow up and be whatever you want to be, but UCAIPA is in the situation where we really can be. We have the funding sources, we can't be everything, but we can choose what we want to be, and we can, we can absolutely get there. However, whatever we choose, the strategic planning process is a very important process, and it is the process to figure out where we're headed. One outcome of the strategic planning process is the budgeting process. This slide indicates what our current budgeting process looks like, and that is through historical precedent. So basically, we look at what we spent last year, and we say, okay, costs go up because costs always go up. So whatever we spent last year, we're going to add X to it, and that's what our budget's going to be like. It's a, it's an acceptable way to budget, but as far as the acceptable ways to budget, this is the weakest one. We're basically saying, this is what we did last year, we're doing it again, and we, we're stuck with the costs, and costs always go up. So we're spending and keeping our fingers crossed that we can balance a budget. It's acceptable, but pretty weak. Really, what we should be doing is budgeting, we should pick a strategy and then align our budgeting based on that strategy. Which, if we think about the strategic plan as a product, we'll get to that level-two budgeting. It's, it's, it's a good way to budget, it's better than what we're doing now, but it's not, it's not great. This is coming up with a strategic plan, holding that plan, it would be static, and then developing a budget. And then as, as the, as the problems that were originally defined, as those things changed, we're not, we're not dynamic with our budgeting, we're just stuck with the original plan, the original problem, and we just keep moving forward, and we say, okay, we, three years ago, we had a strategic plan, we're doing the same thing that we always do. It's kind of, as I was thinking about this, it's kind of like the game of telephone, where originally you can say, this is a great strategy, but if you, if you don't take a lessons-learned perspective and change your plan and tweak it as you go forward, you'll make the same mistakes over and over and get further and further away from where you want to be. This is better than what we're doing now, but not where we want to be. Where we want to be is, is this, this scenario, where we have an adaptable and dynamic budgeting process. It would start with a strategic vision, we would say, this is where we want to be as, as a community. We would define the problem correctly. So instead of just saying, you know, we want to spend more on police, we want to spend more on fire, we would look at that to say, no, we want to, we want a safe community. And we, in order to have a safe community, these are the things that we need to do. And then we would align and allocate our resources, our financial resources accordingly. So we're not coming up with the result that we want, we're saying, this is the vision that we want, and we're allocating resources to attack that vision. We would budget based on, based on the problems that were defined, and then importantly, we would monitor the results, and we would learn from our mistakes the following year, and we would say, okay, this is what we, this is how we monitored, and these are our results. We're going to redefine the strategy as necessary, we're going to redefine the problem as necessary, tweak our budgets and reallocate our resources, and then do the whole thing again. So it's a, a very dynamic process, and ultimately, as, as I keep talking about a strategic plan, it would be a dynamic strategic plan that allows the budget to get plugged into this. Again, the budget is a very important part of it, but a, a strategic plan is much more than just the budget. It's, the strategic plan is much more comprehensive, as we look through all these different things, and we're, ultimately, we're saying, what does the community want from our city? We're saying, we want police protection, we want fire protection, paramedic, we also want economic development, entertainment options, recreation services. We talked about drainage infrastructure, it's a big theme in UCAIPA, better streets, we're always talking about that. Ultimately, we're also saying, we want, we want to pay less, we want, and there's a balance there. If we want more stuff, you got to pay for stuff. Where's the balance that we're working through? Additional facilities, the last few council meetings, we're talking about additional, additional projects. More fields and courts that are better maintained. And the last box there, less visibility, a lot of my neighbors tell me, I just wish I heard from you less. I want you out of my life. And so that's, that's a real thing here in UCAIPA, too, is there's opinions of, we want more stuff, but there's a real sense of, we just want to be left alone and have a safe community, and you guys do your job, and we can live our lives. So that's all part of what I see a strategic, a strategic plan reconciling. As we, as we go through a strategic plan, again, we want to establish a vision. Here's an example vision that I just, I just put together, but rather than go box by box by box, it's just, we want a safe, maintained, vibrant, and affordable community that we are proud to call home. Next, we would define the problem and the strategy. Again, I've got a couple of examples, these are only examples, these aren't answers to what we're doing, but a couple of things that are always a hot topic here. One is keeping UCAIPA safe. There's a, when I first started here, our city manager, I think this was my first day, he sat me down and said, there's, there's two ways to deal with public safety. One is, well, you would think about public safety, police, fire, paramedic, and then there's a whole other side of recreational programming. If you give people and kids opportunities to do things, they'll stay out of trouble. So there, there's competing interests. One is add more officers or focus on recreational programming, or a combination of both. And then ultimately, how much do we want to spend on those types of things? And so that would be something that we could hash out through the strategic plan, through that process. Excuse me. All right, then, on the right side, paramedic services. We've got a, a challenge ahead of us on, on paramedic services. Our funding that was set up in 2002, 2002, had no increase to it, it's, it's a, it's a number. Originally was, it was contemplated that it would last for 10 years, it lasted for closer to 20, but now that we're over 20 years out, out, the funding model is broken. There's an asterisk there on that funding model being broken. But also, increasing services, as we, as we hear from our fire chief, the last five, six years, there's been a, a paramedic squad that's been requested in the budget, but we haven't gotten there. There's a better way to deliver services, but because of the funding, we haven't pulled the trigger on that yet. And so a strategic plan would study that process and give us some opportunities to say, this is how the community wants to move forward. That asterisk, just so that nobody gets the, the wrong idea leaving here, we're not, UCAIPA as a community is not broke, nor is it insolvent, but these are, these are challenges in the future that we can start solving now through the strategic planning process. The last couple of things that I wanted to highlight in this process is, once we define that problem and what our strategy will be to attack that problem, we would allocate resources according to the strategy and the tactics chosen. So based on what we wanted to attack, we would say, this is how we're going to budget this year, we're going to do these types of things. It's based on strategy, we're going to say, we're going to spend money to solve the problems that we want to solve, and not spend money on, just because we spent it last year, not repeat, repeat that. And then ultimately, monitor results. That's really key because a, a good, a good strategic plan allows for refinement. And the reason that it does that is because as we're talking through all the problems and identifying those problems, things change. There's been some smart people that have considered strategic planning and the process and the product. Dwight Eisenhower oversaw D-Day, there was a lot of planning that went into D-Day, and this was his quote regarding plans. And it's, I've always found that plans are useless, but planning is indispensable. I'm a big fan of Iron Mike. He said, everyone has a plan until they get punched in the face. And that's, things change, circumstances change, you can do a great job of planning, and then they become obsolete quickly. And so we want to be nimble in our planning, we want to be dynamic in our planning, and we want to deal with the problems as they come up. We don't want to come up with a plan and say, hey, we already talked about this three years ago, we're going to do the same thing that we did, because things always change. So as we go through that and develop a plan, who should be involved? As, when we allocate resources based on our strategy, the budget component of it will be, will be easy. We're going to say, we're going to spend so much time planning and, and coming up with the problems, that the budgeting component of it is going to be a very easy process. As difficult as the budget has been now, it's going to be much easier when we have a plan. because we're going to say, those are the problems we're going to solve and here's the budget to solve those problems. But when we go through that, the community is going to be the key stakeholder in this process. Ultimately, the font's too small for me. What the community wants is what we're trying to reconcile. And it's important for the community to understand that we're dealing with limited resources. And so, based on our limited resources, what does the community want us to solve? We can put that together. But the community is the key stakeholder and the primary beneficiary of the strategic plan. The city council is the governing body and so it's a key stakeholder in this process. With a strategic plan, we're asking for a commitment from the governing body to stick with this plan. Tweak it as necessary, redefine the problem, but stick with it. And just like any commitment, honoring that commitment, sometimes it's really easy, sometimes it's not so easy. And so, that's, city council's involvement is obviously key. And then from the city staff side, the grunt work, as we go through the technical aspects of this, yes, staff, we have a very talented staff. We can do that, we enjoy working hard, we're happy to do so. However, when we do that, there's a bias. We think that the work that we do is good, we want to do more of the work that we do, it's important stuff. The community may say, what you're doing is great, but we don't see, we don't value it the same way. And so, we want to get rid of as much bias as we can through this process to have a real clean, non-biased process. As we go through that, we're talking about facilitation. And facilitating this process, as we go through it, a lot of input from the community, city council and staff. But how do we get to a point of a non-biased process and best promote that process to get a better result? Ultimately, the community wins if we can clear out as much bias as possible. The staff report that you have tonight, I identified the Measure S Oversight Committee as a existing committee that has a low risk of bias. It was an example, it's not meant to be a proposal, but the idea there is, if it was led by staff, if this process was led by staff, there's an inherent bias with doing so. That Measure S Oversight Committee is an example of a community group with a lower risk of bias. And so, that's why it was included there, again, it was not a proposal, just a possible solution. Alternative community groups would also be a great answer to that problem and it would also further lower the risk of bias that we're trying to avoid through this process to make it nice and clean. This is also in your packet, but a couple of things that I did want to highlight on this table. The cost, that's an external cost. As we look at the consultant-led, we were talking about last week, $100,000 estimated. We haven't gone out to RFP yet, we don't know what that number is. But a consultant-led process would be the highest cost. If we were to move towards a hybrid model, which is staff's recommendation, it lowers the cost. And the reason that is, is because we reduce the scope, we re-scope the project to say, all right consultant, you do these things to really facilitate the process, but internally, we can handle these different components and we downsize the scope and it reduces the external cost. The bias risk and the public trust, they work inversely, but hand in hand. The lower we can get on the bias risk, the higher the public trust. And so, if we have an actual, we eliminate the bias or neutralize the bias internally, we do that in appearance and in fact, then the public trust goes up. The staff burden doesn't really matter, staff is happy to work hard, we're excited to work hard. However, there's limited resources with staff, we run lean. And so, the more that we take on projects, the less time we have available to run day-to-day things, which is a real thing as well. But staff burden, obviously, if we went external with everything, that would be the lowest burden on staff. Staff-led process would be the highest. Again, as I look through these, that one's not necessarily concerning, other than the bias risk associated with staff leading it. And then the community input, that's the key. We want as much community input as we can. And so, you can see how we've ranked all of those different things. And again, staff recommendation is the hybrid approach. And with that, happy Easter and I'd be happy to field any questions and I think we do have one public comment, if you want to hear that. Three public comments.
Let's go ahead and have the public comment first and then we'll do our questions and dialogue.
Okay, we'll start with Donna Snodgrass, followed by Mary Ruder and then Melanie Martindale.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to speak against using the Measure S Committee for a couple of reasons. I sent you an email, thank you for the responses that I got from you. We haven't received our first fund transfer yet from Measure S. And that committee hasn't even met and as far as I know, there hasn't even been any staff assigned to it yet. So I think we're getting ahead of what that committee's supposed to be doing, because they haven't discovered their direction for the intent of the creation of that committee. I'll read the reasons that I sent you again. Measure S Committee was created as part of the effort for getting Measure S passed in the first place, making it something else would be a violation of the trust that voters had when supporting this measure, including myself. That was one of the main reasons I decided to support it. There are those who are just waiting for the I told you so moment and rightly so. Expanding the mission of Measure S Committee opens the door for diverting that money to other things, depending on who's on that committee. This committee is supposed to be there to ensure the sales tax money stays in public safety. This is the protection we voted for. The applicants for this committee did so with the knowledge it would focus on the tax money, to expand the duties now as a disservice to Ucaipa residents who may have been interested in strategic planning, but not Measure S Oversight. If you feel you need to expand the duties of any committee, that would be EDAC, according to the description of that committee. However, if anything, if you think you need a committee to work with a consultant, which would be my suggestion, it needs to be a separate entity from any other existing committee operating in an advisory capacity to that professional consultant for the city. And it should consist of polar opposite opinions of how the growth of this city should be handled. Anything else would only serve to keep the division of this city fueled and burning. Thank you.
Mary Ruder, North Bench resident. Today, I'm here to speak only regarding my opinion, I represent no other group in Ucaipa. The Measure S Committee was created with the specific goal of ensuring that Measure S funds would be directed toward public safety. I'm on board with that. The focus of this committee should only be on this task. Now, it appears that your intent is to increase the Measure S Committee's responsibilities to include oversight of the strategic plan. Last month, when the committee was formed, members of the council appeared to agree that the committee would include a representative from every single district. In the final decision, the committee includes two representatives from District One. I live in District One, yay, I get double the representation. And yet, I absolutely find this abhorrent. I'm imposed to an unbalanced representation in what appears to be a kowtowing to a loud and vocal group who continually complains. Expanding the scope of this committee is even more inappropriate due to the skewed membership. If the council wants insight and oversight and input into the strategic plan, create another committee. And make sure that the responsibilities of that committee are delineated prior to appointments. So I urge you not to expand the Measure S Committee responsibilities.
Melanie Martindale, District Four. The Measure S Committee was requested by your citizens to ensure that Measure S funds go towards public safety as the measure dictated. In order to do this, the committee's sole commitment and focus should be on the budget, the moving of funds gained by Measure S into a specific account, which pays for the public safety. This is the only way to ensure the committee stays focused on their main goal. You stated in the agenda documents that increasing Measure S Committee's responsibilities and oversight into all items in the specific plan would increase transparency and public trust. I disagree. You lost public trust in Measure S Committee the minute you decided not to require a person from every district for fair representation. You had the opportunity to seek out more applicants by district and you refused. Now you wish to expand their control and say in all manners of oversight when it's heavy-handed in one district. This is wrong. If you want to create more trust and transparency, then I ask that you create a separate committee to oversee the strategic plan and other items as listed in your agenda. This committee needs to be required to have one representative from each district and as well be led by a consultant with no personal ties to past or present city council members, as well as no ties to any local political groups. Only then would you be restoring the public's trust, as well as showing all of those who reside in Ucaipa that you truly want what is best for Ucaipa and for all of Ucaipa, not just a select few. Thank you.
I have no more comments.
Thank you, ma'am. I bring it back to the dais for questions and comments, let me start on my left. Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Mayor, thank you for the comments, everybody. Mr. White, thank you for putting the, coming back to us again for a strategic plan. I think you hit all the points that needed to be discussed. You know, Ms. Crawford, I think Ms. Crawford talked about this earlier. The need for a strategic plan, have I said several times in here, are the important thing. That model is key to moving forward, not only financially, but strategically, you are including the community. They will be on a panel. The importance of bringing a consultant in, I like the hybrid model, it'll be more cost-effective for us. But the consultant helps us with, it doesn't look like staff or us are steering it. We're serving our community. If we're not, that way you don't have the appearance of steering the whole plan. And if you don't plan things strategically and then work your budget around it or work what's important to our community, they're going to have the biggest piece of this. However, we put the panels together, they are formulating this with us, side by side. I'm hoping that builds trust with our community, that we're doing this together to focus on. And you put many items up there, I think maybe you and a few people got together of the issues that are issues that we hear in the community all the time, what's important. I think the Measure S itself needs to focus on Measure S. I think that's a big issue right now, that they need to focus on that. We have enough oversight. Creating more committees for more oversight, that's wonderful, but let's not oversight everything. The oversight will be at the ballot box later, quite frankly. So I think for the strategic plan, we need to move forward on this. I like the hybrid model, we can bring somebody in to work with our wonderful staff. I think you hit all the valid points of why we need a strategic plan, especially when you put the financial piece up there. Because once you know where you're going and what the roadmap is, then we fund whatever the most important issues are for our community and we let them drive it. That's how good business is done. I think we need to take a chance and actually do it, we put it in our goals this year, everybody, right? And I think this plan is a good idea, I like the hybrid, I hadn't thought about that before. I think staff had got together with some folks and thought, what's a way we can do this a little more cost-effective? As you see, we're trying to make moves that are cost-effective. And, but how can we really get this done? And the community is the biggest part of this thing. But we're going to have to develop trust with the community to do this. I know there's still some feelings out there about trust with the council and trust with the city and where we're driving things. We can talk all day and we can say we're going to do things, it's by deeds, just watch what we're doing. We're trying to move forward, we're trying to do the right thing and I think this is the biggest piece of it. If we can get together strategically and move forward as a community, I think a lot of the other issues will get mitigated over time. And it just takes good people getting together, good neighbors and trying to do the right thing for our town. We have a beautiful town, we have a wonderful place. The fire mat scared me a little bit tonight, chief, but you know, when you live in a rural area, this happens. So you have to think, that might be one of the things the community thinks about. If we live in rural areas, how much do you develop? Into more rural areas, look at the fire overlay, there's all kinds of things that can come up. But you don't know until you talk to your community. We know safety is going to be an issue, we saw what the vote was on Measure S. But I think they singularly need to focus on that, I think that's important. Thank you for bringing that forward, we appreciate the work by the staff and what you guys are doing, that's my opinion on that.
Thank you. Councilman Woolsey?
When we originally talked about this and the cost of $100,000, I was, of course, not in favor of that at all. But we did recommend that we could do an RFP to kind of get a cost of that. Since that time, I've really done a lot of thinking about this. And I believe that the best option would be to hire a consultant. We can do the RFP to see what the cost is. You know, it might be less than that. But if we go with a consultant, it addresses these issues. It addresses the ongoing challenges in balancing development, community needs, political dynamics. And Mr. White, you stressed and stressed the bias. And it certainly would, you know, take away that issue. So my recommendation would be that we go with option one, with a consultant.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Beaver?
I support the hybrid model, I think staff are more than capable of carrying this out. I think the idea of having a consultant at times to assist with different portions of the project that are just outside of your reach is a good approach, considering we asked you to do it, right? Take the bull by the horns and show us. You came back and instead of it just being a no, it's, we can, but here's where we can't. So I like that. Measure S Committee, they're our watchdog, right? They need to maintain that 30,000-foot level. It's the same thing I've told city manager Casey, I said to city manager Mann. Tonight, when I speak to, in terms of city manager Crawford, I'll say the same thing. Don't get in the weeds, because then you can't see everything that's happening. And if we bring that Measure S Committee down into the weeds and get involved in something that is outside of their designated task, they're going to miss something. Or, as stated, there will be the perception that they're more involved in other things and not so focused on the task at hand, which is to have oversight on our newly passed tax measure. I think there's an opportunity to involve some of our pre-existing committees that already exist. Maybe it's a commissioner from on, from the planning, maybe a committee member from EDAC. I'm going to be honest with you, I think what the city needs is a, we said it, right? The strategic plan's a roadmap. I'd like to see this strategic plan come back with a segment of a five-year plan, a 10-year plan and a 20-year plan. And if that's the case, 20 years ago, I was a junior in high school in this city. So maybe even our youth advisory. And for anybody who's listening who says they're kids, they can't be. Those kids on our youth advisory committee are smarter than us, pushing out their 4.7 GPAs. So they have a firm grasp of government economics, because they're getting A pluses in that course, so. And it should be a committee that comes together and has a discussion. With that being said, there are plenty of grassroots committees in the town that I'm sure would love to be part of a formed committee with some pre-designated, these are already committee members. But I do say that Measure S, everybody on that committee, that's a standalone committee. They don't get involved in anything else. Their job is to stay at that 30,000-foot level and be hyper vigilant on all things Measure S expenditures.
Mayor Perdian?
I believe the same thing, I don't think that that committee needs to have anything else on their plate. But as I've told you guys before, I'm that guy that tries to do everything in-house. We had a consultant come in and tell us, compare all the pay from city to city. And we paid how much for that?
About $60,000.
Okay, and then we had the same thing that our city attorney did on comparison. Okay, and then we had the same thing that our city attorney did on comparison to city managers. How much did that cost us?
Nothing additional. It's included in the retention.
And we did that in-house. I mean, we had our own attorney do that and stuff. You see where I'm going with that? We do everything in-house. We keep our money in our own pockets, you know? It's just like having, what is it? Something in associates, they do our, our Abbott and Associates. I mean, we get seventy, or they get seventy percent of all the money that they bring in. We get thirty. Plus, they use all our facilities, and then they take care of other cities as well, from what I understand. And so that percentage of seventy percent goes up, and our thirty percent is lower, because they're using our facilities, they're using our power, our water, our, our stuff. I just don't get it. If we do it in-house, we keep that money to ourselves. We have a consultant here that we're gonna be paying for, you know? And I believe that we can do everything in-house myself. So, you know, what do they say when the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over again and expecting something different? I think that that's what we're doing. We're doing the same thing over and over again, and we're expecting something different, and it's the same thing. It costs us money all the time. So I believe we should do it in-house. I don't think that we should do it outside, but I do believe that the Measure S committee needs to stay in their lane.
Thank you, sir.
I would have to agree. I think if we're gonna, if we're going to have a committee, I think it need, the committee needs to be unique just to the strategic plan and not Measure S. I think from the public comment to some of the colleagues up here, I think there's an importance making sure that the Measure S committee stays on task with that and that alone. Depending whatever their responsibilities within that is determined to be, that's all they have to focus on. I like the hybrid model, and the reason being is because it kind of combines a couple of different things. It, it helps with public trust a little bit, because it's not all completely in-house. But the same token, we have the input from our skilled folks that we have here that can provide input, and it's not going to be another task on top of the other two thousand tasks that everybody has to do and all the different hats they wear. We know that at times we are probably running lean for all the objectives that we're trying to get done. So I think if we are gonna have a committee, it needs to be a separate one. And I think if we're going to pick from one of these options, I, I'd like the hybrid of the three that were provided. That's my, my two cents. With that, do I have a, a motion from my colleagues?
I'd like to make a motion, Your Honor.
What's your motion?
I'll make a motion that we do not support the Measure S committee's role to assist in the strategic planning process, but that we do select the hybrid option for our staff to work on and bring in a consultant with, to work with staff. That's my motion.
Okay, and no separate committee?
Not at this time. I think we can revisit it once we get this form, bring in the consultant and get their input. That's what they're gonna do. They're gonna come in and you tell them what you're looking at. We might want an ad hoc committee, and then they will help facilitate that with our staff. That's what they do. That's what you pay them for.
Okay. So I have a first, by Councilman Miller. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Thank you, sir. That brings us next to Mr. Preciado, item number fifteen.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Recently, we had a, a Sanrio County Sheriff's deputy that was killed while he was on duty. So the flags at the Ukepa Police Station and also county buildings throughout the county were lowered to half-staff. The lowering of the flags at the county facilities is consistent with the county's flag display policy. The flags here at City Hall were initially, initially, initially not at half-staff, and the flags at City Hall are now at half-staff, and staff had directed staff to return to council regarding a city of Ukepa flag dis, uh, display policy. So we are here tonight to discuss that. The city currently does not have an adopted flag display policy, and that would apply for the, the US flag, the state flag, the city flag, and also the prisoner of war, missing in action, uh, flag that is on display here at City Hall. So the city does not have an adopted policy in place right now. What we do have, though, is that we have a practice that we have been using for many years now, and that practice has been to follow the federal and the state policies for, for the flag display and lowering the flag to half-staff. The city's practice has also included lowering the flags when there is a death of an active city employee or a Ukepa resident, the, the death of a Ukepa resident who is serving in the armed forces. For example, Tyler Davis, who was killed in action in, as in the Army back in two thousand twelve. Our public safety partners, the county sheriff and Cal Fire, they do have their own adopted flag display policy, and they do follow those policies at the police station and at the fire stations here in the city. The proximity of the flag displays at the police station and here at City Hall, they highlight the difference between the county sheriff's policy and also the city's practice, where sometimes the, the flags are lowered at one facility but not at another facility. And when you can see both flag displays from Ukepa Boulevard, it, it sometimes creates questions. So each, each facility, City Hall and the police station and at the fire stations, they do displays, display various flags. Again, that includes the US flag, the state flag, the city flag, the POW MIA flag, and also the county, the county's flag. And then I, I believe the county sheriff also has their own flag on display. Staff is recommending that City Council review and discuss a city of Ukepa flag display policy and then also direct staff as appropriate. A draft policy is included in, in the report for City Council's consideration, and that, that draft policy follows the federal and state policy, and it also has language in there that authorizes, authorizes the mayor to order the American flag to be flown at half-staff to honor this, a deceased city official, a deceased public safety partner, partner official, such as county sheriff and Cal Fire, or other individuals of significance to the city of Ukepa, for any deceased, other individuals of significance to the city of Ukepa. So that concludes the report, and staff is available for questions.
Thank you for being. Do we have any public comment on this? Okay, do we have any questions for staff?
I'll move approval on the draft flag display policy.
We have a motion by Councilman Beaver?
I'll second.
First and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, sir. That moves us in to item number sixteen, it's a public hearing, so we'll open the hearing. Current time is seven fifty-nine PM. The presenter will be Mr. Ben Matlock.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. On November twenty-fourth, two thousand eight, the city council had adopted the freeway corridor specific plan and environmental impact report for a twelve hundred and forty-two acre area along Interstate Ten. This area itself has long been intended as a commercial, industrial, and residential hub for the city, including prior to its incorporation, and has always been seen as a significant economic hub for the city of Ukepa. However, two thousand eight was certainly a big change in terms of how the market was responding, and so that dramatically changed the land state for both commercial development and despite the freeway corridors' original promise, the momentum for major projects within the area stalled immediately after that plan was adopted. And so to address these challenges and changes, the city began an update to the freeway corridor specific plan in order to better attract investment and while still meeting the Ukepa's broader economic development goals and quality of life goals for the area. So following a multi-year effort, the update was ultimately presented to the city council at their September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four meeting. Majority of the property owners did attend the meeting and indicated support for the project. However, there was still one property owner that was concerned, and so the council did table the item to allow for additional efforts between the property owners and the members of the public, so that the solution could be potentially found and then presented for future community and council action. However, the city council did certify the supplemental EIR that was prepared for that project. However, shortly after the SEIR certification, an attorney representing the Ukepa Preservation Society filed a lawsuit alleging violations on the environmental document. However, because the freeway corridor specific plan update was not actually adopted, meaning that there was no actual active projects or clear entitlements or any beneficiaries of the plan, the city was left to defend a environmental document without any partners involved to help defend the, the cost of the EIR, the SEIR. Basically, the city would pay for litigation on a project that didn't exist. And so it didn't really make much sense for the city to continue with that. And so this item really is being presented tonight to halt that litigation as part of a settlement with the Ukepa Preservation Society. Does not prevent City Council from exploring the update in a future meeting or considering the SEIR either in its current state or a modified state in the future. It just merely recognizes that since we don't have a approved project, it doesn't make sense for us to spend time to litigate on something that doesn't actually exist on paper other than the environmental document itself. Now, city, city staff is also requesting some guidance on the next steps as well. We have been working on the update, however, there hasn't necessarily been consensus with the, the property owner that was outstanding, and so staff does want to return on the twenty-eighth for different options for City Council. However, as part of the original motion that was provided in September, staff was to hold a town meeting on the final plan to gather community feedback. However, as we've been kind of working through these, these steps, it creates a few different timing issues. One is because we're still working through the ultimate direction and the, the consensus on what the planned direction should be. We don't know which one will be the preferred direction or alternative, and so we don't really know what that plan is going to be to present for members of the public. But then, two, because it would be the final plan and we have the final specific plan, all the environmental documentation prepared, and then would essentially present that to the members of the community for their feedback, which would then trigger future changes to the plan potentially. And so we'd kind of be stuck in constantly revising a plan that's gone through these different steps. And so kind of help provide a more meaningful approach. In the meantime, staff has attended different city festivals. We do intend to also be at the Music and Arts Festival and also create a survey for feedback, and so we're requesting some information whether or not having a town hall meeting after the plan has been finalized and all environmental reviews been done, hoping for feedback, and then also recognizing that the whole project's essentially been finalized, ready for City Council, whether or not that's the best strategy, or if other efforts to meaning, meaningfully gauge the public would be better, or the timing would be better in a, in a slightly different order. And so that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. And we don't have an applicant presentation, right? Okay, so that brings us to public comments.
We have one comment. Craig Heeps.
Thank you, Ben. Honorable Mayor, council members, you guys look sharp up there. Very nice. I just wanted to talk about real quick, just the thought that we had, I have no objection to the rescission of the EIR or, or any of that. I was part of the Wine Country Specific Plan Committee. I know we're getting to the same word again, committee, but that committee was made up of two city council members, two planning commissioners, someone from Trails and Open Space, the EDAC committee, the Wine Alliance, a large member, a major landowner, developer, anyway, a very good cross-section of the community. And we spent quite a bit of time working on the plan for the whole Wine Country Specific Plan. It gave us the opportunity to go over and really look at just a lot of different perspectives on what we could do with the properties. And so when we came back to council, we had a very comprehensive plan. We worked with Ben. Ben spearheaded the whole thing, along with Placeworks, who was, I believe, also the EIR consultant on the freeway corridor at the, at the plan as well. I'd love to see something like that come to, to fruition for a few reasons. One is, we talked about, the word bias came up. I know even in here it talks about, you know, balance of, of legal prudence, fiscal responsibility. The freeway corridor specific plan is not just for my client, but for the whole city. It's very, very important to the financial growth of the city and the shopping and the different things that can happen. And I think, I just wanted to ask if you would consider a committee with a cross-section of the community, some public members from the community as well, then when it does like before with the Wine Country Specific Plan, come back to City Council or in a public forum, there, there's been quite a bit of work put into it. So, anyway, that's my request on behalf of the Robinsons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so if we don't have a applicant for rebuttal, then it would go to closing the hearing. Current time is eight oh five PM. Next is council discussion and dialogue and questions. So let's start on my far right. Councilman Beaver? Got anything?
No, sir.
Mayor Perdian?
What would be the, what would be the positive on, if we, if we did put a committee to get together like that? Have you guys ever thought about anything like that, or?
We started the, the process for the update of the freeway corridor specific plan several years ago, and at the time there, I believe, I don't believe there was any thought to form any committee similar to the Wine Country Specific Plan, primarily because the Wine Country Specific Plan was something new. It was something new that the city was going to be considering in a specific part of the city. For the freeway corridor specific plan update, since it was an update to a plan that is already in place and adopted in two thousand eight, there wasn't much thought put to form in the committee. It was a matter of hiring the consultant to complete the studies and then engaging with the, with the property owners and also with the community, as Ben mentioned, through the various events to gain input. But there wasn't any thought to forming a, a committee. And with the Wine Country Specific Plan, the committee's input, you know, was from the beginning of the process. Here, you know, we've, we've already gone through most of the process, which doesn't, which doesn't mean that we, we couldn't form a committee now, but I, I believe, you know, as Ben mentioned, we plan to come back in the near future, hopefully at the next City Council meeting to present some options. And at that point, we could, we could include what the, the options for a committee would be at that point. But I believe the committee to start looking at the update itself would require, it, it would be more beneficial if, if, if we were to start from the beginning, which I believe that might be one of the options that will, would be presented.
I'd like to clarify a little bit. The Wine Country Specific Plan had a committee component to it because we already had an approved project with the one house per acre, and there was a lot of input from the community that wanted the ability to work outside the box, think outside the box, and get the input to incorporate the trails, the active walking connections in the community. The AVA was a big part of it with that interest to apply to become that. So there was multiple things that came into play in, in a community committee, along with council and staff representation, I think council was on that, or just staff, to, to provide that input as an alternative to a plan that was already adopted. The freeway corridor specific plan primarily is that ongoing communication with people who actually own the property. I think they don't have a lot of interest for people in the community to give input in the sense of what they do with their land. I think some of the push-pull that we've been receiving for quite some time has been based on properties owner frustration of the city telling them what they can and cannot do with their land, if that helps. We could do a committee. The con of that would be it just delays this process even longer.
So a town hall with some of the owners and, and us proposing, and what, what they're saying, because a lot of times we go to the owners and they're telling us something different than what you guys tell us. And so...
I think at the end of the day, with the town hall, the discussion was based on maybe a a revised plan from the one that was originally brought to council in September that involved ongoing communication with the five property owners that are part of the freeway corridor specific plan. However, we were provided with an alternative that this council hasn't even seen in a public forum. So now we really don't have an adapted plan. We have a couple adapted plans that we need input from you before we even bring the committee to a meeting to even provide input. So we're kind of caught between the chicken and the egg, really, with this in order to know even how to proceed and what even to present with you to even get community input on.
I get it. I mean, is it something that maybe we can have two people from the council go, have a, what is it, like an ad hoc committee or something like that too with you guys when you guys meet with the owners and stuff? And so.
Yeah, I think at this point in September, out of the five owners in the project, we had the majority of all the property owners support the September plan. So we're kind of dealing with an outlier that may still not be happy with what's being proposed. And we completely understand the position, but we have a majority of the property owners in that freeway corridor agreeing with the plan that was presented. There is a new working model that incorporates more of their input for your consideration. And then there's a brand new model that's being proposed by one of the property owners that we will bring before you for consideration on the 28th of April.
Okay.
Yeah, I gotta go back. So I had nothing to say initially, but my frustration is getting better. In September, I made the motion that everybody go back to the drawing board. And when I say everybody, not just the property owners, the people need to be involved in the conversation. So the fact that the property owner says, don't worry about, don't worry about the citizens, we got this, is troubling to me. Of course, now there's a problem because now we have two potential plans and there's been no discussion had with the people of the city of Ucaipa. So yeah, I can see how that's a frustrating spot, but my motion wasn't to go back and discuss it with the property owners and see if they can come up with something that they all liked together because they all liked the previous plan together. The problem is that the city of Ucaipa comprises 55,000 some odd residents. And from what we were hearing, people were very upset about the idea of certain development taking place in that area. And so the idea was, okay, fine, there's got to be some kind of a level of give and take. Because if the people who don't want anything built down there get their way, the people who do are unhappy and vice versa. And the way we negotiate is, we're going to piss off some people. It's going to happen. That's how we, any negotiation happens. Somebody's going to walk away going, man, I did not win, but I didn't lose either. And if the, I think if we go forward with the plan that excludes the voices who've been very outspoken for the last year about way development should go in this community, we're going to lose. We're, we are going to lose. Councilman Miller said that oversight will take place at the ballot box, and that is absolutely true. So how do we represent our constituents? Some of these property owners are not our constituents. They own property here. They're not voting here, they're living somewhere else. Because I don't know how to reconcile that in my mind, to represent, to represent the people who live here and call this place home, or to represent the interests of somebody who lives in Los Angeles County and calls that place home. And so the direction that I gave in September was go back to the drawing board with all parties. Bring us back something that can be an easier pill to swallow for everybody. And I feel, we missed that. So I'm sorry to the property owners, but if they failed to reach out to some of the citizens of the Ucaipa, or we failed as a city to facilitate that discussion, then we need to go back to the drawing board.
I absolutely hear you. Three years ago, staff was directed to hire a consultant to review the freeway corridor specific plan. In that direction, council also allocated the ability to have the green space or the mitigation areas. That was a direction by council. We hired Placeworks, $700,000, to go back and spend the last three years reviewing the freeway corridor specific plan. The 2008 plan at the time, that's adopted right now, includes warehousing. I know that's a big issue for some of the members of this community. This plan continues to incorporate that because of the original plan. So we can, yes, absolutely stop, go back to start, you know, with the $700,000 spent on Placeworks already, along, you know, with other implementations with pushing this project down the road. But if that's the council's perspective, when we come back on the 28th, we can, we can do that. Having a town hall meeting right now on completely adapting the plan is kind of some of the, a high, a model that's somewhat addressing some of those needs too. But we'll follow the direction of city council if that's what you want to do.
I understand what you're saying, but to make it an example, we don't need to have a committee and involve the community if we decide we're going to put a stop sign in on the corner. That's a small line item. But when we're going to change the footprint, the, our city of Ucaipa, it needs to have a bigger, a bigger discussion. Ucaipa has historically been horrible at explaining the why. For the longest time, people had no, and I had no idea that Avenue E roundabouts meant either eminent domain and taking, making a four-lane roadway or roundabouts. I thought it was, because we didn't say it. And I asked Ray Casey, why are we telling people this? Are we trying to keep this stuff a secret? Because we're not advertising that. It wasn't until we started doing Walk with the Mayor last year, we said, hey, check it out, here's the reason why. So if we're not explaining to everybody, like they did in 2008, that this is a plan brewing over here, we're keeping that under, under the paperwork and pushing along absent any type of public input, then we're failing. And so in 2008, I didn't know that there was warehouses in the making. I didn't know that because we didn't advertise it. So if we're going to change the actual footprint of the city of Ucaipa, then we have to have a, we have to have a public hearing. We, or rather, we have to have a community meetings. We have to advertise it like no, no else, so that everybody can make an informed decision on whether they support it or not. And when I say that, it means they support a candidate that supports it or not. Now, there are plenty of pros to the warehouses. There's a lot of them. We haven't explained them in great detail because we wait until a public hearing at nine o'clock at night on a Monday. So until we really get out there and say, hey, check out, here's why this is being even entertained, not just for the financial benefit of the property owner, which I believe in the property owner's rights, that's the American dream. And I don't like government telling people what they can and can't do with their property. I've said that before. But until we explain the why and say, hey, check it out, this is why the city of Ucaipa has even entertained this idea thus far, because these are the, these are the benefits. And if we're going to entertain it further, here's maybe some ways that we can mitigate the concern. That's why I say go back to the drawing table. Is there a way that we can say, hey, what's your concern? This. All right, it'll be a tall lift, but what if we did this as a mitigating factor? What if we say, hey, only E vehicles could come into the city of Ucaipa? Because I think air pollution was one of the biggest concerns that was brought up. So by city proclamation, anything accessing that warehouse must be an E vehicle, E 18-wheeler. I don't know. I don't have the answer. I'm one person. But maybe there might be people in the community who say, you know what? I don't want them. But I could live with that. If that discussion wasn't had, then we have no business hearing this item at this point. Well, we have a business hearing this item to resend something.
Jess, and I hear you. I just wanted to put note as you're deliberating, delaying the plan right now could also impact one of the property owners, which is the Pumpkin Patch.
Impact how?
I guess I can answer a few things. So I do want to clarify that the motion was that we conduct a town hearing after the plan was finished, was how the motion was recorded on the meeting, which is why I brought up the item that it didn't make sense on the timing. But we did do outreach to the public since then. We have been actively doing stuff to get feedback on the plan. But in terms of a few different projects, so the Pumpkin Patch itself, they are working on doing some of their permanent site improvements. They have a number of temporary structures. And so they're relying on the freeway corridor specific plan going into effect because some of the structures that they'll place it, technically under the existing freeway corridor specific plan is where the proposed Pacific, or the main roadway will go through. So if they do those improvements now, which they're trying to condition to do, the location that they're going to do them is where a future roadway is going to go, which means that they'll have to demolish them at some point. And so that's one of the nuances that they're trying to work through. And then we certainly do have another project application that's in process as well. And so there's a few different pieces that are going through that we're trying to be mindful in terms of the timeline for that effort. And so we're trying to balance the goals of what the plan was, what the general plan had, the applicants with some sort of activity that they're doing on their property, as well as meeting the council motion, which was to get the feedback and then to have the town hall. But it was worded that the town hall was after the plan was prepared. So it was after, it was to have the town hall after 30 days of the plan being made available online, and then that the council meeting would be held after that.
Oh, well, then it does make sense to do the town hall if that was the direction of the council then. So even if it puts them in a weird spot to be accountable to the public after the plan has already been submitted, that's, that was the direction. I don't remember that being my motion, but if that's what you say, either way, we need to make sure that's done before this ever comes back to the council for consideration because the public needs to be involved. My, this is my one-fifth vote. Again, I think that I said, maybe my motion included, but I clearly remember saying, everybody needs to go back to the drawing board. Everybody, not just the property owners, but the city staff and the citizens, go back to the drawing board and find a way to make this work. They're so contentious, we don't need to hear it. Go back and try it again. We missed the mark. So as it relates to, I mean, we're getting off a little bit on a tangent because I think at this point, we're just talking about the rescinding of this. I just, this is a huge, this is going to, this is going to change the way Ucaipa looks forever. It's not a small task. It's not a small position we find ourselves in. And so we need to do it right. And there is absolutely no rush. My apologies to the Pumpkin Patch, but we're not going to rush through a plan that's going to change the way Ucaipa looks until the second coming of Christ. It doesn't make sense.
Okay, first of all, I have a statement that I'd like to make. About 25 years ago, Redlands was going through the same thing with the Orange Grove, right? At the Donut Hole. And they were doing battle with the Redlands preservationist group there. And they were told, actually by the state, I believe, that you, it's a local issue. You need to work it out between yourselves. And after a year, it never got worked out. So the state did step in and they said, it will be developed. And it was developed. And we're kind of looking at that same thing here, you know? We need to be mindful of that because that could happen here. Now, I do have a question for staff. If we pass this motion tonight, does that pave the way to begin a new EIR on the west side of the freeway to move forward with the multifamily housing that's across from the Pumpkin Patch and to move forward with the proposed warehouses from Pacific Industries? Does this allow them to go ahead and start the EIR and submit for their proper permitting to move forward with those warehouses?
No, so they would not be able to move forward with the, with the plan. They would have to submit a separate project if they wanted to move independent from the city, which they would have the ability to do though. They could certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. I needed to know that.
Thank you. I respect everybody's comments and, you know, I looked at the September 23rd, 24 meeting. Obviously, a couple of us weren't on the council then. And this is a deep issue that goes back 40 years, if you really study the history of this whole issue involving that, that area. So I think the marching orders from September 23rd, 24 were, did we do comprehensive outreach to the property owners, which I asked, I think, at the last council meeting? And Ben, you assured me we did, right? We met afterwards. We had had some meetings with property owners, correct? For me, am I correct on that assumption? We had a meeting afterwards. I met with you guys, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, and we talked about land use flexibility and overall development strategy. We looked at, we designed, there was another, we had a property owner that we talked to and you guys put another design together. I saw it. That mitigated some of them issues that one of the owners had, had looked at. We also received another overlay that one of the property owners, again, one of the property owners had submitted to us. That's fine. So you did do that. I did see it. And I, coming in, I was trying to find out what, what's really going on here. This is a lot of years of things happening if you look back to the history of what's been going on down there. So consequently, the councils, you know, they certified the SEIR and IR, and they, they basically sent it back for you guys to do some work on it, and here you are again. And this thing has been bouncing back and forth for quite a long time. And in the end, you got to put something up on that screen and we got to vote on it. Now, I'd love to have the public come in and tell us what you think. We'll probably have a really long meeting that night. I would anticipate there's going to be people, people are going to have questions about warehousing. They're going to have, people are going to have questions about traffic and truck traffic and diesel exhaust and all them issues that will come up. We'd love to hear from everybody. But at the end of the day, we've got to make a decision and you need to throw it up there and we need to decide what to do. Because in the end, when we talk about strategic planning, right, Mr. White? The sustainability of the costs we're going to incur over time to provide services for this town are part of that strategic plan or in this freeway corridor specific plan. Now, how that's going to look, the public's going to tell us. What's going to, maybe partially it'll be handled, maybe whatever that model that draws down there finally, what drops out of the sky and what we're going to do, we have the power to do that. But this has been going back and forth for a long time. And it's been interesting watching how many years this goes back. I mean, there were campaigns against it many years ago when a plan was approved. I mean, historically, this has been an issue. It's finally here and we have to deal with what are you going to do in the future to sustain the services for the community? We are a beautiful town. I think a lot of us think of this beautiful little quaint town as what we have, but we're actually a medium-sized city now. And that's going to grow out to the build-out. So for a strategic plan for what you're going to do in the future, you're going to have to have some revenue. So you've got to manage the growth effectively, whatever that means. This is going to be part of doing that. Now, the community is going to tell us what they want. I expect a big line the night we talk about this out the door, which is beautiful. We want to hear from everybody. But at the end of the day, it needs to get up on that screen and us five need to vote on it. And we need to stop bringing it back to staff, I'll be honest with you, and kicking it down the road. Nothing against my fellow council members, but we got to make decisions. That's why we're on this dais. And I just think we need to get it back to us. The 28th is the next meeting?
28th would be the next meeting and if you want that to be the community meeting, we could make it a study session.
Bring it. And invite people. I'd love to hear from the community. I'm sure there's some very, I've had a few emails myself, just getting up to speed. It's been interesting to research this of really what the history of Ucaipa is over this singular issue and what people think. But at the end of the day, decision makers, policymakers, need to get it up on that screen and make a decision. That's how I feel about it personally. And I think that's why we're sitting up here.
And I do want to clarify, the 28th, we will present the different options for the path forward. It will not be the adoption of any specific plan.
But we need to talk about it. Here's, we have a couple options. Here's what we can look at. People could come talk about it, give us their opinion. I think it's wonderful. But at the end of the day, it may not be the 28th, but we're going to eventually have to make a decision. This has been going on a long time. You guys know it, whether you agree or disagree, we need to make, we need to do something eventually. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir. I would have to agree. I think we need to make a decision on it, but I also think we need to include the public. So having a town hall meeting or a community meeting, whether it's the 28th or a different time, doesn't matter to me when necessarily, but I think that needs to be part of the process for consideration. And my other colleagues have voiced very similar concerns and whatnot, so I won't rehash those.
So for the recommendations for this item, I'm going to move that we proceed with recommendations as presented by staff, items one and two. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Should we send it?
Should we send it? Yes. So we've got a first and a second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
Yes, question on the motion?
Uh huh.
Okay. I don't know.
I don't know if this is going to pass or not, but I won't be the third vote here. If there's three votes, one way or the other, I will go along with those three votes. I really don't like being against everything, which I know I seem to have the reputation for. But I don't think this has really been well thought out. I think it's very rushed. I've not heard from anybody in my district in regards to this. I don't know that they're even aware. heard from anybody in my district in regards to this. I don't know that they're even aware that this has come up for discussion. So, um, that's where I stand.
Okay. So I, I was the first, and I had a second. Was that Mayor Proton? Is it you?
No, that was Beaver.
I said Beaver. Okay, so those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
All right. With that, well, actually, I guess we're supposed to do roll call. On that, does, do we need to redo that? You had down roll call.
Mayor, we, we have the vote.
You're good?
We're good.
With that, moves us to our council member comments and reports. Um, I got two things, and then I'll kick it to my, uh, colleagues. One, um, when we close out our, our meeting tonight, I wanna close it out in memory and honor of a gentleman of our community that was a police officer, a son, a father, a husband, member of our community, recently lost to his battle of cancer. Been fighting it for a few years now. Um, Seth Franklin we- went home to be with the Lord this past week. And if you've been around our city for a length of time, you probably know at least one of the Franklins, if not several of their fam members. So I wanna keep them in our, our prayers and thoughts, uh, tonight as we end and throughout this next week. Just kind of a sobering thing. Life is, life is fragile. Um, the second thing is, I received a concern from a citizen about an event that we have at our Y-PAC coming up. And in the title, it is referred to as a rave. So I've asked, um, Megan to give us a quick little overview of what that is, and what we've done to, uh, prepare for it, so that if there's any other concerns or, uh, correspondence with the public about it, they maybe have a little bit more facts about it, and they can rest at ease on what we have, have done to prepare for this.
Thank you, Mayor, for inviting me up here this evening. On Saturday, April nineteenth, the Ukaypa Performing Arts Center will host the first-ever electronic dance music night, also known as EDM, uh, with the theme of Shrek Rave. Uh, the term rave can have carry negative connotations. However, um, it is a modern event, a dance party that's centered around electronic music, lights, and creative expression. These events are designated, or designed to be safe, organized, and regulated gatherings that bring people together of all backgrounds to enjoy music and celebrate in a positive environment. We have coordinated with Ukaypa Police Department, who are great to work with. In particular, Sergeant Ford has been really a helping hand at all of our events, and, uh, we will ensure the safety of all at the event. In addition, we will have security there and will not allow illegal activity. Our goal is to create an experience that adds culture and economic value to the city while maintaining the comfort and well-being of residents. And while I say that, one of the items that the staff in the Community Services Department has been tasked with over this past year is to have the Y-PAC have, be a cost recovery to the highest percent. Difficult task, but, um, in doing so, we researched ways that we can sell more tickets, events that were popular, and through that research, EDM music has become extremely popular over the past couple of years. And, um, while we didn't wanna just have a rave, we thought, uh, we would have one of the fun outgoing raves as Shrek, which those that know the movie, uh, what happens at these raves are people do dress up like the Sh- like the Shrek, Shrek? The donkey? I think it's the donkey in Shrek. And, um, again, it's something that we're trying, we have heard can be very successful. It is an indoor event, uh, where we will be using the indoor theater, the black box, and the courtyard. And, uh, the capacity is five hundred. Kinda summarizes the event, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. Council have any questions for, at all, concerning this?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mayor Proton, what you got? For announcements, reports?
Um, well, I'm kinda disappointed tonight, because, uh, Hanson Wong didn't speak at the podium, so it was kinda bummer to me. But anyways, if you wanna come up here just for a minute and tell us about the run that we're gonna have, uh, is that Sunday? Oh. Run for the Hills. Saturday, the twenty-sixth.
Yes, Saturday, twenty-sixth, Run for the Hills, Crafton. And, uh, it should be a great event, uh, although it's gonna push the limits on a few people. Uh, it's a little tougher than one that we've had before. But do what you can. It's a community thing to get together, even if you don't make it through, and families will be there and so on. Just to make another comment, on Saturday, there's quite a group of people planting trees and so on. And, um, Jennifer wanted me to dig, but I brought the wrong shoe, so I didn't have to dig. Anyway, so, um...
He wore flip flops to the dig party.
That way I didn't have to dig. Anyway, uh, please come to the run and enjoy it if you can. Thank you.
All right. Now, now our, uh, council meeting is complete, now that we had Hanson Wong. Um, we have, um, uh, Music and Arts Festival coming up, and then we have, uh, Love Ukaypa is May third. May third, yes. So that's gonna be, um, quite a big event, so appreciate.
Um, I had the honor of, uh, attending the, uh, Crafton Hills Open Space Conservancy meeting, uh, last week. Um, my first time attending that meeting since I've been on the council. Uh, what a great group of volunteers who, uh, just love our open spaces on, um, they have some events coming up as well. They're gonna be working towards getting out there and, and advertised. Um, I'm gonna be attending their next meeting, so we'll, we'll collaborate with them. They also, and I was, I saw one of their, uh, fundraisers, really was gonna be a huge, uh, impact on our economic development, and I think our Chamber of Commerce would be, uh, have, I mean, maybe a good partner in the future as well, just 'cause it's a shop, uh, shop local, spend local, bring us the receipt, and there's gonna be some type of money there for the conservancy if you're buying stuff here in Ukaypa. And so, um, we're honestly just, uh, salt of the earth kind of people who just love our hometown. So, uh, that was a great meeting. Um, the next meeting, I hope and pray I'll be at. I will be jumping out of an airplane with the United States Army on the twenty-third. So if I don't make it, it's been, it's been a blast. I'm scared to death. Don't take lessons from the crew that jumped out Oh, I saw that. the other day and had a hard landing. I'm terrified of heights. Um, and I said no initially, and then they, uh, then I was made fun of and heckled by my coworkers. If you're in law enforcement, you know that they, you're really good at that. And, uh, and so it was reminded it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, and I'm jumping with the United States Army Golden Knights out of Oxnard on the twenty-third. So throw up some prayers, the chute opens this way it's supposed to, and, uh, I don't pass out and have a picture me all knocked out as on the descent. Um, and, uh, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Councilman Wilson?
Councilman, uh, Miller, and, uh, city clerk and I, uh, spent a day, a morning down at Burtec, at their processing plant. So, uh, we had a good, uh, information meeting beforehand explaining everything. And then we took a tour through the whole plant, all the processing. Uh, it was explained in detail about all the, uh, compost and everything. Um, it really was interesting. It really makes you aware of what happens to your trash. So, uh, I'm hoping I'll do a better job at home with my trash too. So, um, it was fun. We, I think we had a good time. All right, Bob?
Oh, it was great.
Yeah. Yeah, we learned a lot, so.
Councilman Miller? Yeah, I wanna thank the mayor for, uh, closing the meeting in, in honor of Seth Franklin. I got to know Seth over the years with his father, uh, Greg is a friend of mine, and his mom, Sid. And, you know, uh, Seth was a great police officer at Redlands PD. He was around eleven years, he was there. And, and Seth had a great reputation with the police department. I think Redlands PD's done a wonderful job working with the family. Uh, they've been there through everything. Uh, tomorrow, they'll be at the ceremony, uh, at Wildwood. Um, you know, the law enforcement brotherhood does take care of their own. And, uh, you know, they're taking care of the family also, and trying to help with their needs. But I remember when Seth first was talking about being a police officer, he mentioned it in church. You know, we were at a pew, and he, he had talked about what it would be like. And I was trying to talk him into going to FBI, but he wanted to, he wanted to kinda work for a local police department. He went and got his degree at Cal State San Bernardino. I remember encouraging him and get his degree first. You can promote quicker. And, um, he's just such a bright star, and had such a great career ahead of him. But, you know, just, it's just sad. Uh, uh, but, you know, he'll be remembered. Uh, I know the law enforcement family will remember him very fondly for the things he's done. He was a great Ukaypa baseball player, and he played golf. And the videos of him teaching his little son how to hit golf balls, he was so proud of that at Ukaypa uh, range, and, uh, you know, and, uh, the legacy will live on. Seth was just a great example as a father and a husband, and just a, a great friend to a lot of law enforcement brothers, you know? And you, you hate to lose a brother, and he fought valiantly and tried treatments and all the things he could do. And I know Greg and Sidney and Sid are devastated, as is the whole family. But we're there, and we're thinking about him, and we'll see him tomorrow at the celebration of life. I just wanted to say that. And thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up earlier.
Thank you. Um, just wanna thank staff for the staff reports you've been putting out lately, and the information, and the options, and the full scope of things. I think it's been better lately than it's been in the past, my vast years of, four years of being on council. Um, but I just wanted to thank you. You're doing a great job. And congratulations to our interim city manager. With that, ma'am, do you have any announcements you wanna make?
No, I think you all covered it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that, that we'll call our meeting, uh, to adjournment, and the current time is eight forty-one. Next meeting is April twenty-eighth.